3:00 PM, Councilor Vogel.
Right.
Councilor Wallace.
President.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Connell.
Yeah.
Councilor Devlin.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
President.
Councilor Manning here. Councilor McCauley.
Here.
Councilor Shan.
President.
Councilor Tanta.
Here.
And Councilor Ari.
All here. Tell us about late files, and there are actually seven late files now.
I'm gonna need help with those three, but we have four that are on the sheet that is not posted. We have an ordinance, 96, late file classification of parking orders. We have a communication, 351, late file notice in public hearing pursuant to 107 State Street. We have communication, 352, late file four, pursuant to chapter 139, section 1 on dangerous buildings of 107 State Street. And we have a transfer, 110, Public Utility Trust, Palm Island Utility Trust on 100,000 to Reservation Terrace Shoreline Protection, same amount. I don't have the three others.
So these are three late files submitted by Councilors Snyderman, Z, and McCauley. Stand by. The first is a late file proposed order that $5,930,000 we appropriated to pay costs for the construction furnishing and outfitting approximately 6,800 square foot new Federal West End Fire Station. That's sponsored by Councilors McCauley and Z. That will be the number. Next is a proposed order signed by three councilors that I named that would authorize the city solicitor, looking at the mayor, to enter into negotiations with the owner of property adjacent to the current Federal West End Fire Station to negotiate a waiver of damages or taking order. And there is an associated taking order, the amount of considerations left blank. However, in addition to the monetary consideration, there will be an obligation by the city to adopt language substantially in a form stated which would acknowledge that a reduction in lot size due to end of domain does not bring a lot into non-conformance. Secondly, there would be a recognition that a construction fence would be put up or rent a project between site of the new fire station and the land required, I'm sorry, the land reefering after the acquisition. There would also be, the city would be responsible for directing a permanent fence along that boundary line. And finally, that the city would be obligated to relocate a black hole in private ownership on that private property that's being taken. That's three orders. That make sense, Sir Jones? Everybody has comments in those two items to the council.
I had an order, the first one was with respect to you, Monk, Fire Station. Then I had an order with respect to authorizing the mayor and Councilor McCauley.
Oh, the third item is, excuse me, proposed zoning ordinance, amend section 6- A and 6- B. 6- A has to do with general regulations requiring compliance with the conventional table of our zoning ordinance. There will be a new section inserted to deal with this situation in end of domain where the property owner's lot is reduced in size through government action. And the same language is repeated in 6B as to lot areas. And I'm the sponsor of that, and that's your only. Motion to waive the rules and accept the seven late files.
Seven.
Thank you. So, Sir Jones, if you put the two orders, proposed orders, to the right slot, where your panel will field them later. Okay, now, follow comments. You got any to sign up?
The order is, I think we need to roll call on that, allow me to leave.
So I pick the part. I don't know. All in favor, all in favor of waiving rules and accepting the seven late files? Any opposed? Now we can check this to see who signed up for the vote. So, public comment, you have a hybrid approach. There are some people here in person. They're gonna check the board to see who signed up. And also, you can raise your hand electronically, volume of the order, your hand goes up. Once your call is signed, raise your name and address in record, and you may speak for two minutes on either of our. Thank you. The first speaker is. Mr. Connell, your letter is in the record, so you can go ahead and direct.
Pardon?
Please go ahead. Your letter is in the record. We already sent this to all the councilors, so they have the written.
I mean, to understand what you're saying, but how much time do we got?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. So, when does that start? Right now?
Yeah, as soon as you give your name and address.
Okay. Uh, let's see. First of all, it's been a while since I was here before. I have to comment, Ms. Berry made what he would want, if I ever come up for AI. I'll tell you, when people come out and scare my wife and kids and burn cars on my 275 acre farm in Raleigh, 1:00 in the afternoon, 15 minutes after my wife left the house while I was marching it, that got my attention. And I don't stop because it's a safety issue. I'm gonna read you something. Just come in today. I've been working with the new, and I underline new, Inspector General of the United States Nuclear Regulatory Commission, Robert Fittell, who ironically, Trump nominating both houses confirmed. And he's now investigating Trump because Trump didn't have any information I gave him about the counterfeit parts, along with Biden and Obama. And Obama may be facing federal prison if you don't get pardoned. Since May of last year, the IG assigned two of his senior special agents to We the People, and they are currently working on over 30 investigations that We the People has asked them to complete. And I just got this from one of the senior agents. Because you probably know from last time I was here, there's a gag on the Massachusetts State Police and the New Hampshire National Guard. They cannot testify whether they believe the plant can be evacuated during the summer months, especially July 4th. That's what he says. Please forward, the OIG, Office Inspector General, the contact information of these additional state troopers that you say spoke with. Or you can have them contact me directly. No, that's not gonna be the case. We're gonna have a conference call, so I can be side of the informant and everything on the record. You have my work email and phone number. They have the law enforcement, and the NRC is a law enforcement agency. We can be trusted. You confirmed that fact when you told us in your last email that you told these troopers that my experience with the OIG has been good so far. I look forward to talking to these state troopers who will confirm your allegation that no safe evacuation of the Seabird Station would be possible in emergency.
Mr. Connell, you're over your time.
I'm real. All right, now I wanna leave these things for the record, okay? This is a book that was written by the former chairman of the NRC, waiting to take recorded Obama's Chief of Staff, Emmanuel. And the NRC IG is investigating him. This I would like very much for all the members to look at. I hired a licensed drone operator to fly his plane over the Hampton Beaches and Salisbury Beaches during July 4th.
We just had.
So I'd like you to look at that, and here's some other documents. But I must say, I've been very impressed with Mayor Cove of Ainsbury. She met with me without an appointment. She couldn't believe what I gave her, and she wrote a letter, and I think all of you have seen it. And I believe the whole town of Ainsbury wants to prove the market is still alive and well in Ainsbury. And they're gonna run a national petition through the whole town, and I think that's something that the new report should do.
Mr. Connell, I'm sorry.
So, okay.
Others, I have to cut you off.
Well, leaving this for the record, all right, and you can test parts of it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I have the written address, but could you please state your address for the record?
Pardon?
State your address for the record.
Well, since I had threats of my life, someone recently, I don't wanna put that on the record, but my post office box is 646 Rowley Mans.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Stacy Harrison.
Thank you for your time.
I need you to hit your water. I'll hit you.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Bye. Just need your name and address.
Stacy Harrison, 14 Harrison Avenue, Salisbury, Mass. I am representing the Winter Circle Running Club. I have a letter. I didn't know there were so many of you. I don't know if I can pass this out, but I'm just gonna read pretty much this, but if there's, I'll leave it here. If anyone wants to take a copy of it. But I'm here in regards to the Corona Thon. I can't remember exactly what agenda member it is, because you have so many on there. I've been to the Salisbury meetings, and they're not this big and overwhelming. I just wanted to start by expressing my sincerest apologies for the late notice of the permitting for this event. Our original understanding was that we would not require permitting for the city of Newburyport because the race starts and ends in Salisbury. And as soon as I was made aware of the fact that we did need the reverse to be permitted through Newburyport, I began the meeting to meet with all the city and obtaining signatures from the DPW Fire Department, the City Clerk, and from Lieutenant Samasco. Over the last few weeks, I've worked very closely with Lieutenant Samasco to ensure that the race is safe and organized. He did sign off. I'm not sure if you all got a chance to see that. But we have certain details in certain places, and I think the biggest thing that I, again, I apologize for it being so last minute. I am new to the role of co-race director, and moving forward, I promise that I will be more informed and organized. I think the biggest thing that you all need to know is how small the race is at this point. We have less than 50, or well, probably the day of, if we get everything permitted, on the day of the race, there'll be less than 50 runners. So over two loops of 13.1 miles, about 15 of us did the course, the 13.1 mile course this past weekend, and nobody knew we were there. You know, the only difference is that we might be learning the number. But I included the map, and you all should have an updated map and all the streets that we turn onto. Oh, I'm sorry. If you have any questions or anything.
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everyone's here live. Now we're gonna go to the electronic list. I ask that the first person is Ken Itrado, name and address for the record. Sir Itrado.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Ken Itrado, 27 High Street. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you for your time and for listening. I'm just speaking up in support of the plan for the traffic calming and safety measures on High Street at the Eastern End. Neighbors here are all aligned and enthusiastic about a plan that's going to protect our homes and properties from being struck by vehicles, as well as making this safer for people to access one of our spectacular parks, especially in the winter here in March's Hill, and for providing better markings and protection for cyclists as they, as they come around the corner here. The one thing I'd like to leave you guys with is I'd strongly encourage the city council to consider, on a materials basis, to use cobbles for the islands in the middle. I think it will eventually be a good cost decision as well. I know that was the primary concern of folks. Granted, it's gonna last a lot longer than concrete that will wear out, and it will also be consistent with some of the other installations on the street. You know, as sort of one of the entryway roads into the city here, I think it would be nice to do this right, so I would encourage folks to, to, to make that expenditure. And obviously, like I said, neighbors are all aligned behind the plan, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is John Egan. Name and address, can I go right at that?
Executive Director of the YWCA Greater Newbury Port located at 13 Market Street. I want to thank you all for considering our request for additional funding for the YWCA at Hillside, a 10-unit lodging house designed to serve low-income individuals, units that are desperately needed in the city. First of all, I would like to thank the city council for their past support of this project. Your initial grant of $150,000 helped us to secure $600,000 from the Commonwealth to support the project. From the start, the YWCA was responsible to purchase the building from David Hall. The original zoning permits had no condition on David Hall that he develop affordable housing. Affordable housing was listed as a finding, not a condition. The finding did not indicate who was to pay for the construction of the affordable housing. The original permits had conditions related to the preservation of market rate units and sustainable building design. Inclusionary zoning was implemented after this project obtained its zoning grants, its zoning permits. Our original CPA application clearly indicated that we were purchasing the property from David Hall for a yet undetermined price. In that original application, we outlined what additional funding sources would be needed to complete the purchase of the property. CPA committee recommended in the city council that our application be funded, and the city council concurred. And then unfortunately, we were hit with several delays. Zoning took longer than anticipated. Resolving technical issues related to the HVAC took longer and cost more than anticipated. And the pace of construction in Hillside was slower than anticipated, and the YWCA requested that David Hall hire someone to complete our portion of the project lest we lose our Commonwealth funding. Just as we had everything in place, COVID delayed construction for an additional nine months. The delays and technical solutions increased the cost of the project by $330,565. We anticipated seeking additional funding from a variety of sources to cover this increase. We did not think it reasonable to return to the Community Preservation Act with a request for the entire amount, so we asked for $50,000. We have applied for $260,000 from the Federal Home Loan Bank, which makes. Yep. Why do we, why do you say we'll need to raise additional funds to purchase and operate the project, which is why we have applied for these funds from the CPA council? These costs include not only acquisition costs, but also legal costs and those associated, associated with the acquisition of property and a mortgage. I would also like to note that David Hall has helped the YWCA minimize its cost in the development of this affordable housing. He's covered many initial costs, like the initial 21E.
Next speaker is going to be Doug Muir.
Yes, good evening. My name is Doug Muir, 10 Hancock Street, and I'm here on behalf of the Custom House Maritime Museum, which has a CPA application for $43,000 for restoration of the front door, the historic front door on the building, and replacement of the rear door. Over the last three years almost of our ownership of the building, we've done a lot of work. We have a lot more work to do. A lot of what we've done, as you well know, has been with the help of CPA and the city council and city funds or taxpayer funds. And on this project, total cost is a little over $68,000. We've raised 25, and we're looking to the city for 43 and change. Some of the things we've done include, as you all know, I think, new roof on the building, infrastructure work to eventually provide HVAC. We've created drainage in the rear to deal with the stormwater runoff from the roof and east side of the building. We've restored free galleries. We've renovated the basement of the building, but there's a lot more to be done. It's, as you, as you know, I think, city councilors, it's a, it's an old building, and it requires endless amounts of attention. So we would urge you to support our application for the door project, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is, next speaker is Marge Gasala.
Hi. Hello?
Just name and address, word ahead.
Okay. My name is Marge Gasala, and I live at 109 State Street. I would like to speak to the issue of blight at State and High. I'm a direct-to-butter. I have been a witness to the lack of maintenance of a property by Global over the past three years and have concerns over safety. A couple of the recent concerns I had was an adult who parked his truck and was using the curbing and gas station pump barriers as a skate park. A bicyclist who found the far corner of the property appropriate to relieve himself. There's been a lot of weird incidences of how people use the property. I would like to point out that all mobile signage was taken down quickly after closing the station. Was this an effort to disassociate their brand with the abandoned and rundown property? I do appreciate the temporary solution of the Jersey barriers to stop the cut-through traffic. I do appreciate the weeds being cut down. I still have concerns about the health of the trees next to our house, but none of these address the basic blight or ugliness of the site. There's nothing redeemable about it. My second concern is that any gas station that has been in place for an extended period of time prior to 1980 is assumed to be a brownfield. And I'm hoping that the parties responsible for the contamination should do the cleanup. My husband and I have been living at this address for 35 years. When we purchased our house, yes, we knew it was next to a gas station. The setup of our house is unusual in that it has a door and a window which provides a direct ass, access to essentially our basement along, along State Street. That space has been used as a joke shop, a model shop, and other retail uses. After closing on our house 25 years ago, our lawyer pointed out that the retail use was grandfathered in, and that if it was not used for two years, we would lose that usage. We were not interested in retaining the retail usage.
If you could please wrap up wherever the, wherever the two bits.
Okay. I'm sure Global has lawyers advising them. Global should be held to the same standard. Zoning should be enforced. Progress should be made towards residential use. So I'm asking you to please vote to hold a public hearing and approve the order of common nuisance and moving toward demolition. Thank you for your time, and thank you for serving our city.
Thank you. Next is. Lila Wright. Please unmute yourself. Go ahead. Just need your name and address.
Hello, this is Lila Wright, 55 Reservation Terrace. You hear me all right?
Go ahead.
So, this past Thursday, we lost the remaining section of the road in front of our home, which caused our water line to be compromised. We're currently receiving our water through a garden hose attached to a neighbor's spigot. And I know on the agenda tonight is a subject of the shoreline erosion out here, and I'd like to invite every council member to please come out and have a look at what's happened out here. A large area of the road collapsed in, we had less than, we had 32 feet between our home and the river's edge. The amount of space that is left between the city's property and the state's property is not large enough for the Coier Bag project. If you have any question whatsoever, please come out and say. We are extremely grateful for the help the city was able to bring to us last week, and it's certainly making a huge difference in keeping our home here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jenny Donahue.
Hello, everyone. Council presidents and councilors, Jenny Donahue, 18 Cherry Street. I will be as quick as I can, but there's a couple of things I wanna just speak in favor of. The first one is I would like to see the city council vote unanimously to, on, on the blight on State and High, the nuisance order, and to bring this to a public hearing. And secondly, would like to speak in favor of the traffic calming up by March's Hill. That's something that's been a long time coming, and I've been sitting in on the meetings for that, and I just wanna share with the whole council that this is, you know, something that the council should come together on easily enough. And also, lastly, I just wanna give a little extra support for the folks out on Reservation Terrace and just make sure that we're doing everything we can for them. And thank you all for your time.
Next is Brian Wilson.
Hi, Brian Wilson, 29 High Street. I also am speaking to voice my opinion about the High Street traffic calming. So I just wanna note that less than 12 hours after we spoke with the committee last Thursday, we had yet another incident where a car actually passed on a double solid line at about 50 miles an hour going out Newburyport into Newbury, as we sat there waiting for the bus to come pick our children up. So that's an incident that likely would have been very, very discouraged with the plan that we have in place. I just wanted to highlight that I think our plan is solid. I think we have some good support, and I wanted to just reassure you that, that those are the types of things that happen that we can prevent. And then secondly, just regarding the materials, I think that having a similar aesthetic that in front of the high school, I think it would be mistake to look at it as a short-term solution with potentially using stamped concrete when overall the costs long-term could certainly outweigh, especially when you consider the, this is such an important entry point to the city. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mio Young.
Hi, my name is Mio Young. I live at 11 Jefferson Court in Newburyport, and I am speaking for the YWCA Hillside Project. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the original funding of $150,000 for this project. But I understand that there's some confusing regarding, regarding the permitting of the project. This project was permitted as a 6C project. There was no condition for affordable housing. Under the 6C permitting, it was required to show community benefit. The first community benefit was market rate apartments. Here, there's also some confusion. David Hall was under the impression that after all the units were built, he needed to put in place a deed restriction that 25% of the units would remain as market rate units. We now understand that the deed restriction should have been instituted at the beginning of the project, and David is currently working to put in place the restriction on the property. Second community benefit is the environmental sustainability of the housing. These two benefits meet the conditions under the 6C permitting process. In addition to these benefits, David Hall committed to working. In addition to these benefits, David Hall committed to working with the Y WCA to create ten units of deeply affordable housing, but it was not a condition of the six-C permitting process. I ask you to support this project and vote to award fifty thousand dollars in CPA funding to the Y WCA of Greater Newburyport. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sheila Treeth.
Hi, I'm Sheila Treeth at eleven Chandel, Newburyport. And I'm also speaking in support of the Y WCA at Hillside of getting more funding from the city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Madeline Nash.
Hi, this is Madeline Nash. I'm a member of the Newburyport Affordable Housing Trust and I'm also here to voice my support for the Y WCA's request for funding. I've heard that there is some comparison between the project with the project recently developed by Minco, known as the Boston Way Project or Newburyport Crossing. It's important to note that for the Minco project, the state issued a request for proposals for the property adjacent to the train station and the state mandated that there be twenty-five percent affordable units. The remaining seventy-five percent of the units are market rate. The affordable units at the Boston Way Project are restricted to eighty percent of the area median income. And this means that for a single person, they could have an income up to seventy thousand dollars and still qualify and an efficiency can rent for seventeen hundred dollars. Minco owns and operates the Boston Way Project and as a for-profit developer, all of the profits for this project go to Minco. In contrast, the Y WCA's project, a hundred percent of the units are deeply affordable. The majority of the units are restricted to thirty percent area median income. And in other words, there will be very little profit, which is not inconsistent with a wise mission as a nonprofit organization. These are two very different development models with two very different funding streams and should not be compared to one another. The Minco project is also very important to the city, but it's different. It's also important to note that David Hall will not operate the Y WCA property at Hillside. He will not get one cent for the long-term operation of the project. The Newburyport Affordable Housing Trust submitted a letter of support for the request of fifty thousand dollars dated April twenty-second and we remain very excited about the project as it will serve to increase the city's affordable housing inventory and meet a pressing housing need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Betty LeBeau.
Hello, my name's Betty LeBeau. I live at six Walnut Street in Newburyport and I also am speaking on, in support of the Y WCA project. I come at it from a personal experience of being a volunteer for a meal program that goes through the Pettingill House and once a month we prepare hot meals and deliver them. And I've been doing this for maybe ten years and we have delivered food to some really ramshackled places and seeing kids living in squalor is very difficult to see and seeing adults living in squalor. Recently, a lot of these places have been demolished and market rate housing's been put up. I wonder where these people are going because they, they seem like they are not able to get out of their poverty. So I want to speak in support of not only having this affordable housing for these people. I've seen the projects that the Y has done and delivering to those properties. I can see the dignity on those people's faces. It's really a wonderful thing to see and experience. And I also think it's a great PR opportunity. I'm a public relations professional for the city in, in the investment that it's giving into a passive in, building environment for affordable housing and truly affordable housing for our vulnerable community. And I thank you so much for your service and for your consideration of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeanette Isabella.
I think I've unmuted. Jeanette Isabella, one hundred Water Street, Newburyport. I'm also speaking in support of funding for the YW ten units. When I think about the, you know, over, over the long haul, the hundreds of women who will benefit from having a safe, affordable place to live that will give them a leg up after, you know, who knows what happens in their lives. It's needed and I, I just think it's, it's the right thing for us to do. It sounds like a lot of money, fifty thousand dollars, but it's five thousand dollars a unit to give a woman a safe, comfortable place to gather what she needs, maybe go back to school, whatever, to get her life back on track. So thank you for listening and, and, and thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Next is Diane Mazzarana.
Yes, thank you. My name
Sorry, go ahead, start over.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Dr. Diane Mazzarana. I'm speaking in support of the council setting a public hearing to order demolition on the abandoned gas station at State and High Streets. I live at one-twelve State Street. I live directly across from this blight and I can tell you that no one takes care of it in the winter. It is full of ice and snow until we, the neighbors, removed the garbage cans. They were overflowing with garbage. There's lots of alcohol bottles. I walk there with my dog. I've seen syringes. I bought this house for a new start for myself and my family. My daughter's room faces the, it's the front of the house and she never opens her windows. And I said, how come you never open your windows? She said, what, see that ugly gas station? So I have a teenage daughter who won't open her windows because it's so ugly. And I'm a professor at the Fletcher School of Law and Diplomacy and the Medical School at Tufts University. I have guests who come from all over the world and colleagues. And the first thing they comment on is they cannot believe I'm living across from what they consider a dump and an abandoned building. So this is not how we want to represent our city. This is not how we want our children to live. The sign is up there in tatters. The building is falling apart. It's rusted, it's garbaged. Construction companies use it as their private parking lot. And so I really would like this to get ordered for demolition. I'd like a public hearing on it and I'm very much in support of having it either as a residential use or a park or something like this. And my last concern is, you know, how long those oil drums have been or gas containers have been sitting in that ground? This is our property. Are we having leakage all over? You know, what is happening? I don't want to wait ten more years. I would really hope we can get moving now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eileen Grady.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. My name is Eileen Harch Grady. I am a resident at ten Cushing Ave and I am also the Health and Wellness Director at the Y WCA Greater Newburyport. I am here to speak in support of the Y WCA Hillside Project. Having been an employee of the Y WCA for almost fifteen years, I see every day the dire need for affordable housing and it is my sincere hope that the city council will consider and approve the additional CPA funding of fifty thousand dollars towards this very important project. And I thank you all in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is David Hall. Sir Hall, I think you've unmuted yourself. Just give your name and address already. Sir Hall? We'll come back. I'll try coming back. I have some other people, so just hang in there. Next, that would be Maureen Adams. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Maureen Adams. I live at nine seventy-fifth Street on Plum Island. I'm just calling or talking today to support basically what Leah Wright had said. And I want to thank everybody in Newburyport City Council and the mayor for helping us with our recent flooding that we had in this area. And as Leah said, I would invite you all to come out and see the damage that was done from a storm that was approximately, I think, eight hundred miles offshore. And I would ask that you help preserve our shoreline here and extend the barriers that you've put, especially if the dredging is not going to happen this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to try David Hall again. Mr. Hall, can you, can you speak? All right, well, I'll try at the end. Dominic Garibaldi.
Hi, my name is Dominic Garibaldi. I live on the corner of fourteen, it's, I'm sorry, sixty-seventh Street Reservation Terrace. I'm calling in support of Ms. Lila Wright. Everything she says is correct. I'm currently working with and communications with the Dan Genolfi from Warwick Consultant Company who is representing us and getting our funding from the government for this project. I've been going out there about every other day taking pictures and films. You know, fortunately, things are happening on itself slowly. The jetty on the south side where Plum Island is, is actually sinking. And this last storm actually brought sand over from the ocean side through the jetties and it's coming in in the inlet side, which is great, but it's going to take some time. So I, I know many monies are being, you know, funneled for a study from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, but it's obvious, the immediate thing that would really help and Lila's right is to extend the spur to the point and then use the sand and fill that in and that, that would be successful because it's already proving itself. This spur that's there now collects a lot of sand. The beach is tripled in width right where the spur is. So if we can just continue the spur further, that would probably help everybody else along Reservation Terrace. So I'm in full support of everybody and anything you guys can do, we, it's much appreciated. Thank you for all your service.
Thank you. We're going to go to Michael Lane. Michael Lane, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Good evening and thank you for the time. I've been here at eleven Jefferson Court for thirty-plus years and this has been an amazing community to be, to be a part of. The YW has been, for me, a gratifying thing as someone that can observe all the great good they've done over the years, in particular, the Hillside community. And David Hall has been an amazing partner in making that project come together. So as you can hear in my voice, I'm, I'm endorsing this strongly. And if I could indulge upon you, I have someone here sitting that couldn't get on their Android that would like to also speak in favor. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, just name and address for record. Sure, go ahead.
My name is Central Warden. I live on Low Street in Newburyport and I do support the funding of the Y WCA Hillside Project. I think it's very important for Newburyport to be participating in this way. Thank you for your attention and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Next is Mary Ann Veezy.
Hi, this is Mary Ann Veezy. I'm, I live at ten Ken Street in Newburyport. I'm also calling about, calling in about the CPA funding for the Y WCA project. Newburyport really needs affordable housing. We're fortunate to have a vibrant service industry here in Newburyport, but very few of the people who work in that sector are able to afford to live in this city. As a result, people need to commute to work here. This leads to a higher employee turnover rate because when a position comes up closer to home, people quit in order to avoid a commute. Young people who grow up in Newburyport often cannot return here because of the high cost of housing. This project will serve individuals whose incomes fall below forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars per year. This would include someone who works full-time at fifteen dollars per hour and makes about thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars per year. People who typically earn less than forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars per year are teacher aides, nursing or medical assistants, childcare workers, restaurant staff, retail store workers, house cleaners and group home workers. They would pay about six hundred dollars per month for one of these units at Hillside. This is deeply affordable housing which the city truly needs. I ask for you to please support this project and vote to award fifty thousand dollars in CPA funding to the Y WCA of Greater Newburyport to help bring this project to a successful conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stephanie Nikodich.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stephanie Nikodich, ninety-three High Street. My comment is about the abandoned gas station at State and High. I live right next door to it. This is where I've lived for thirty years. I agree with my neighbors' comments who spoke previously and ask you to please vote in favor of calling a public hearing and an order for demolition. Without the city council's action, a resolution could drag on for years, hurting not just this neighborhood, but the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Belts. Mr. Belts?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Name and address.
All right. My name is Brian Belts, fourteen sixty-seventh Street. I'm here to speak in favor of the sand and dune replacement on Reservation Terrace. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, you took your hand and you wanted to give it the last try. Raise your hand.
There you go.
Mr. Hall, do you want to give it? All right, I guess we'll move on. That concludes the public comment. Now we go to the mayor's comment.
I will skip through. I have a large update that I'd like to leave today. I just wanted to say to the Mariposa folks that it was so refreshing to see somebody finally using the shared piece over the Woodya Bridge and the rail trail to take some of the money off of our streets and encourage more of that to happen. I've given you quite an update here on the CPA project proposals and, you know, gave you a little bit of background history in terms of, particularly in terms of joint funding that we brought, taken from the CPA to use in terms of school projects. Our Parks Department was responsible for building the turf wheel and renovation of the stadium. Our Parks Department was responsible for building the ball field, Richie Eaton. Our Parks Department was responsible and is still working on Ford Field. They've also worked with youth soccer and the CPA has continued to cover that on for them in terms of the field center doing there. So in terms of the tennis courts, the school committee has voted directly on that and there's no reason why we can't move forward if the parks and the schools working together to build much-needed tennis courts that are here, really need here. I too am, you've heard from so many people tonight. We need affordable housing desperately in our city. There's no question about it. And I strongly encourage you, ten more units is significant influence of helping us get closer to that ten percent. You know, we have forty-three projects looming out there. We really need these projects. We have the funding within the Affordable Housing Trust, within the CPA. to move this project forward. I strongly encourage you to support that. I gave you some additional information about about the park with now. The sculpture is gorgeous. It needs to be renovated. We have a company in, I think it's the Raleigh area, who will be able to fix the sculpture. Once it's fixed, it can help with the water quality also, as well as the work that we've been doing with Vladimir. Now, let's sure, I just destroyed his name, but I had a chance to meet with him and check ribbon. He has this text. He's an international expert on water quality and really wants to help us. So putting the money forward for those projects will be very helpful. There's a late file in the packet tonight to, for money to come out of the Plum Island Utility Settlement. That's for, we've got a call this morning, had a conference call, Secretary Thea Harris. And we, oh, and with the dredge project coming in, they had one bid. The government expected it to come in at four point eight. It came in at eight point nine, almost fifty percent higher. Obviously, we have a major problem of getting this dredge project moving forward. So the Secretary Thea Harris has authorized three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city with we, the city matching a hundred thousand for the four-word project. I've reached out to GZA. I've also reached out to Sunco who has been working with GZA and designing the project. It's all credited except for construction access and ready to go. They will be out there Thursday doing a further assessment of what's happening with that project. I sent you a picture of what's happened, but I think as per the residents, we'd love to have you go out there and see the shape that Reservation Terrace is in now. It was incredibly serious, the new, new moon and the high tides that happened there. It damaged more of the road, exposed our water pipe. We had to put in temporary water for the homes that will be replaced shortly. And we also were at a great risk of losing some homes with the tides there. I spoke to two aides from Senator Marky's office today that they're going to coordinate with Congressman Moulton and Senator Warren and really push the Army Corps in terms of moving the dredge project forward, but, you know, they said they have to look internally about what happened, but this is a huge discrepancy over, of nearly fifty percent in terms of that. I'm pleased that the ordinances for the municipal facility reports and municipal building program, I think, still need more work. There's a, two ordinances as they are, too restricted. The information is changing rapidly. If I might measure these of what you're trying to do in terms of green initiatives, and I ask that you just continue to work with our energy and ADOP committees because we have real experts there in terms of making these ordinances, really need what we're trying to do here. We already talked to the sponsors of the parking ordinances, so they're aware of concerns there. Thank you for supporting the additional members to the Affordable Housing Trust. I know that some concerns were raised about some of the responsibilities, but it's important to understand the Affordable Housing Trust needs to respond immediately when there's a crisis. It can't be something that comes to the council, votes the committee, comes back again. People will be injured, homeless, et cetera. So that's part of why those rules, which were set up, mirror what happens by regulation in the state. So I appreciate your vote last time. Information on CSOs here. We are moving forward with early alert. The state DDP is working on regulations with the bill that was issued for two-hour notification. And we are moving forward with our computer system and I hope to launch our early alert by next month. I did provide you with information from the federal stimulus legislators who are looking at a four-hundred-million-dollar bill specifically to address CSOs at Merrimack River. I would greatly appreciate it if you wrote joint letter, individual letters to them. If you want, I'll send you the one that I wrote to them, and you could follow up. It's really helpful. Secretary Thea Harris mentioned this today, as well as Commissioner Sewellberg. We have to do something in terms of moving forward and addressing the CSOs. We're meeting this week with Ezra Glenn, who is the consultant assigned to the city of the Rapid Recovery Program regarding downtown and our academic advancement. I will give you more information about that. Had a really great meeting with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, all of their divisions. They presented information to the mayors and managers of the region. There's more information there. I also wanted to take a minute and publicly thank Walt Thompson and Alan Wolfe and the Institution for Savings, just beautiful murals that they have put up on the Harrow Street Plaza lot. Firehouse opened for the season last week, which is very exciting, and they also have dedicated the lobby of the Firehouse to Kevin, which was really, I think, very special. The Sisaki was with us on Friday to present an overview internally before it's presented to the ADOP next week. Very pleased with the direction that they're in again. And just wanted to let you know Trails and Sales has their annual event over a hundred and fifty-three activities across Essex County that starts this Friday. A lot of outdoor activities, so it's good to have you in tandem. And I will be here. I'm going to turn on the hybrid in the my office, but I'm happy to come in and address any issues that come up during the meeting. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any questions to the mayor? Yes, absolutely.
Mayor, in terms of the CSOs, I know we're going to spend a lot, looking at spending a lot of money on the water. Has any consideration been given to holding these upriver towns financially responsible for messes that you we're looking at, you know, it's like having a golden tour, spending that money and having to run that shoot. So I just want to know if that's ever been a consideration.
Well, what our first approach was, was to try and get stakeholders at the table, and because this is millions and millions and millions of dollars, no single community has this kind of funding. And they've been working under a federal administrative consent order, and for example, PAVL put out twenty-five million dollars of something that we take till twenty twenty, twenty thirty bits, and it was rejected. So they need funding to be able to do this in terms of moving it forward. And the other piece was just getting information. It was really bad this year because of the hurricane in July. It's just no question about it. It was the worst. And, you know, the secretary, when I spoke to her today, she acknowledged that. So one thing that has happened with building the Merrimack River District Commission, which addresses, we've been working together on the CSOs, is number one, education is out there. And we've also brought Manchester, New Hampshire, and Nashville to the table. So that collectively, as we work on money from Massachusetts and money from this infrastructure bill that hopefully will be passed sometime this month, then we'll be able to have the kind of funding we need to be able to change this out. It's just too much for one community, six hundred million dollars.
Yeah, I get nervous if the CSO fly and what that goes to. We each send up a red flag. People are just not going to pass it.
Well, it's not going to be that often because of how fast the river moves. We're measuring the, you know, the bacteria, and, you know, there, we closed the beaches twice this season despite all the rain. So I but I think it's more important to let people know that better, we shouldn't be on a paddleboard. We shouldn't be on a kayak and going into the river when the bacteria shut high, but it dissipates quickly. That's, I think, the only advantage of the Merrimack River. But, you know, again, it would be wonderful to be able to clean up this river.
Other questions from the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
What's received with the consent agenda?
The consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. Approval for the minutes of August thirtieth. There are precommunications. Communication three forty-eight is the FY two thousand twenty-one year report. You go to budget finance. Communication three forty-nine is a KP bar review and amendment from Middle Street Bridge. That's the general government. Communication three fifty is a letter from Steve Comley. That's to be received and filed. There's an application fifty on the Corona-thon and half, full and half hour on October ninth. You go to public safety. Rhino transfers in the consent. Appointment, we have one appointment, two seventy-two, Alphonse Montoni, ten Woodman Way to the Housing Authority until nine one two thousand twenty-six. Following items are removed from their respective committees. Budget Finance, order two sixty-five, order two seventy-four. Planning and Development, appointments two sixty-nine, two seventy, two seventy-one, order two seventy-three, communication three thirty-eight, ordinance eighty-seven, eighty-eight. General Government, communication three thirty-one, and appointment two sixty-three. Public Safety, application forty-nine, ordinance nine-three, communication three thirty-nine, and ordinance eighty-six. Those items are all out. Motion to approve.
Hold on. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? For example, are all those items actually coming out? Councilor Collins?
I'd like to move ordinance eighty-six from public safety. That is not, that is not coming up tonight.
That is removed. That, Councilor Shan?
We removed ordinance eighty-seven and eighty-eight as well.
Okay, those, those are removed. Any other changes? Three removals so far. Any else? I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so done with that. I'm going to call five minutes recess, and I really do need five minutes, or three hundred seconds. Any more? Senator Regular Temple. What we got? Motion received and filed. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That is filed. Communications?
Communication three fifty-one, which is a late file. Notice in public hearing, assumed that General Law Chapter one thirty-nine, Section one, respect to one oh seven Sixth Street, submitted to Councilor I.
Motion to refer to three fifty-one and three fifty-two collectively planning development?
Second.
Three fifty-two is also related to. Okay, first, can you also just read the?
Three fifty-two is the lay-out, or again, that moves back to one oh seven, different slightly in the sense that it is ordering, in theory, that demolition is start to occur within so many days of its order. And again, it's submitted by Councilor I.
Okay, your motion, second sent to planning and development. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, just in planning and development. We'll get that report later tonight. Onto transfer.
We have a transfer. It's a late file. It's a transfer one oh one, an amount of one hundred thousand dollars coming out of Plum Island Utility Trust fund to the Reservation Terrace shoreline protection.
Motion to approve budget finance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is referred. Second reading.
Second reading to appointments. Appointment two sixty-seven, Monica Bartley, fifty-eight Temple Street, for the Cultural Council until September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And Bruce Menon, one forty-eight High Street, Human Rights Commission, until nine fifteen, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve two sixty-seven, two sixty-eight collectively on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
On those two appointments, Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Conlon.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane.
Yes.
Councilor McCollough.
No.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
And Councilor Arden.
Yes.
Any yes or no? All appointments pass.
Onto orders. We know that there are two printed in the agenda and two that were accepted by late file. A point for a pardon.
First order is two seventy-eight. That is in order with respect to the acceptance of the Colby Farm parcel C, open space, submitted by Councilor Heather Shan. Second.
Any discussion on the referral planning and development? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is referred to planning and development.
Next is a order two seventy-nine, which is authorizing the NRA land transfer submitted by Councilor I.
Motion to refer to planning and development. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next is the, they very late filed bond order, five million nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars with respect to the West End Fire Station.
Motion to refer to budget finance.
Aye.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's budget finance. Last order?
Last order authorizes the mayor and Councilor Collins to continue discussions with respect to the land proxement to said fire station.
Motion to refer to planning and development and budget finance collectively. Second. Okay, so any discussion? This would be a two-thirds. Go and join me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous in my mind. On the ordinances.
Ordinance eighty-five, which is the Affordable Housing Trust, increasing the membership and codifying the same as a municipal board.
The second reading.
Yep, this is a second reading, correct.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Move on to second reading. Councilor Vogel. Yes. Councilor Wallace.
Yes.
Councilor Z, no. Councilor Conlon.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Khan.
Yes.
Councilor Lane. Yes. Councilor McCollough.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Tontar.
Yes.
Councilor Arden.
Yes.
Next item, one no. Second reading passes. Next ordinance is, there with me, it's a abolition of the civic commission. It is.
Motion to refer to general government.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's referred to general government.
So we then have ordinance ninety-six, which is the late file codification of the parking waters.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That goes to public safety.
Last one is we have the ordinance, which is zoning ordinance proposed that will be offered by the city report with respect to Section six A and six B. That's related to also the land parking to the forest. Motion to refer to planning and development. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that will go, and then roll call. So clerk of justice, transmit to the planning.
I will.
All right. Yeah, economic development, something to come on. The mayor told me last week though that there had been a consultant that we had engaged through Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and I think we haven't talked to him since May or June, but he'll be back soon. That, Marketland Park, I heard the mayor mention. The Sisaki Associates design team did present to the mayor and to me proposed presentation, and that presentation is going to occur on the sixteenth. And I really encourage people to file in if they're interested in economic committee. I think it's pretty exciting, and it's really, really close to what we hold it on as a body in two years. It's exciting, but so close.
Did you say September sixteenth?
I meant September sixteen, Thursday. That's Thursday. Yeah, so. I think it's early. Starts at six thirty, six thirty on this Thursday. And, you know, as soon as that, as soon as we can, we'll get the presentation posted as well. Budget and finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first order of business is order two sixty-five, which is the CPC. We'll be taking each item individually, so I'll make a motion on each one, Mr. President. So the first one is project number one, which is the YWA, YWCA Hillside, an amount of fifty thousand dollars. Motion to approve.
Second.
In each case, I'll try and provide the committee report, and then I'll yield, and then I'll come back and participate. So the committee heard this at our first meeting on the CPC, which was back in August. You know, you've heard a lot about this from the, from the public comment, as well as probably having read about it. The request is for fifty thousand dollars in support of the Y to purchase the ten units from the developer, Hall and Moscow, at the Hillside, at the Hillside Development. We did spend about an hour or so on this in committee. Director Amy Portman in development was present as well, as were some members of the Affordable Housing Trust. I would say that the discussion generally centered around a handful of questions. One is, what is the city's responsibility in the event when there are projects like this where a cost overrun does occur? As was mentioned in public comment, just as a reminder, the city has, and the city council have approved in the past a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of CPA funds towards this endeavor. The second question I would say generally was, what are the developers' responsibility towards these affordable units? The second question I would say generally was, what are the developers' responsibility towards these affordable units, uh, both in the context of the decision, uh, the findings and the conditions which we did query the planning director on, and then, uh, you know, just sort of what, what are the actual nature of the questions? We did, uh, discuss that length, um, sort of, you know, how the shortfall came up and, and where we are today. In committee, there was a motion to recommend approval. It failed by a vote of zero to three, uh, so we tried to make all the motions to be affirmative. So it comes to you without support from the committee, but comes out for your deliberation here. Tonight, um, Director Port is here to discuss, I think, any questions I would gather through the chair, through, through the president, and that's the current status of things.
Uh, discussion, other counselors. Any none? Oh, counselor D.
All right, if House wants to go. Um, I was one of the three that voted opposed, um, in committee, and I just, you know, I'll just share with you my opinion on it. First thing is, we did go back and talk about the decision, the motions for decision and so forth for the project itself. And it is correct, uh, my understanding is that, uh, the requirement or the lack of requirement was not included as a condition of approval. However, several representations were made during the permitting process, uh, wherein the developer stated that ten affordable units were part of this project, and that was one of the aspects, again, my read, in the, in the boards granting the so-called density bonus. So forty-eight units would be, would be allowed to be built here and are being built here, whereas under other normal circumstances would not be allowed under the zoning. So the city's not only supported this project just by the hundred and fifty thousand CPA funds, but also, um, by essentially imposing on that neighborhood by allowing more units than otherwise would be allowed. Unfortunately, I, I think this is kind of a, a very tough question because, um, on the one hand, I think you can view it as uh, a requirement for the developer to provide these ten units. That's how I view it. So it's interesting to hear the arguments about, okay, affordable is important. To me, that's not really the question. The question is, is it fair to come back to the city and ask for us to put in another fifty thousand dollars into the pot towards these affordable units when essentially they, you know, substantial representations were made by the developer at the time during permitting? Um, and what does the message get sent when you say, yeah, you know what, you can come back in and sort of wash your, your cost overruns through, um, CPA? So that's very concerning to me. I'm very sympathetic, frankly, with the applicant's position, the Y's position. Uh, obviously, we're not privy or part of the deal that governs the relationship between the developer and the Y, so the, the nature of that and, and the allowance for cost overruns to be passed through and when the final price would be decided, sort of beyond our purview, but oddly or unfortunately, sort of being thrust into the center of that discussion and debate. So in the end, I, I came to the conclusion, at least in committee, that, um, A, there could be a detriment, um, really by allowing, uh, you know, additional funds to be allocated towards this purpose when really, um, we really want developers to come in and make honest representations before boards and to follow through with that. Even if the board doesn't necessarily put a bullet in the condition, if you come in and say, I'm going to do all these great things, and then you come back two years later, and it feels like at times you're being threatened that we're not going to get these affordable units, which I think is very unfortunate. That's a very difficult precedent to set. And so again, I'm not discounting the challenges the Y is facing. It's really a horrible position, I think, for all parties, uh, but I came down on that side, at least in committee, and I, you know, we had it in the spirit of discussion, but not everybody was there, and I'm sure that others will have perspectives to share tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion or debates? Counselor Paul.
I thank you, councilor president. I too was a member of the spirit of debate. Um, what we, uh, what I came down to is, um, the city had invested through taxpayer money, which is CK money as well, um, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. The developer was able to leverage that for six hundred thousand dollars of additional funding. I think that's the city's commitment out of that. We showed, we stood up, um, beside the, uh, developer and said, uh, we're willing to invest in affordable housing. The cost of overruns are unfortunate. Uh, you know, there, there were uh, other federal and state programs that maybe could have been tapped in, uh, to, to garner this money, coming back to the taxpayers. Um, you, you know, in the conversation that we had, the fifty thousand dollars isn't to leverage more additional grants and funds. It's just to help cover their costs. And as we heard here tonight, the costs are, cost overruns on construction, uh, management fees, legal fees, things like that. Uh, those things aren't in the affordable housing, uh, purview, right? These are to try to make the, uh, developer whole, in this case, for the additional funds. And that was my position and why I said that. And I will continue to respect it.
Thank you. Further debate, councilor Con.
Thank you, council president. Uh, I am the third member of the Budget Finance Committee. We, um, talked about this, uh, this was discussed, I think it was August twelfth, so it was about a month ago. Uh, at the time, I was only, you know, looked at the CK application, which is available on the website with a lot of detail. Um, there was also a lot of questions that we had during committee, and there were not enough people there to answer them. I know Mike Daset, who's the chair of the Community Preservation Committee, was not able to communicate on the Zoom, um, and I know Director Port had to leave for another meeting, and John Pien from the Y, as well as State Control, were not available. So unfortunately, what I had to do is, after that meeting, I did not know at the time, I did do some research. I talked with Jennifer Blanchett at the zoning, the zoning enforcement officer, and actually looked at each of the permits pulled for this project. Because there were a lot of things stated during our conversation that was really kind of just stated out there. So I had to go do some research and read the actual documents. Um, we heard in public comment, I believe it's John Pien, talk about findings as well as the, I think it's a consideration or accommodations or whatever the other conditions, findings and conditions, which I have to say, I never really even looked and delved into. So the planning board documents had site plan reviews. There were about seven documents that I looked through for this project, just to get the right history and context. Um, and looking at the planning board documents, which is site plan review, findings are like in geometry proofs, where you're a given condition. I just helped my daughter with geometry, so I'm learning all about proofs, but a given is really just what the situation is. So the site plan review identifies everything that's on the site. So in that, they talk about a lodging, uh, house, a lodging development with ten affordable units. It's part of the findings. That was confusing to me, because I couldn't tell if it was a condition for this project. Then I looked at the ZBA documents and the permits that were pulled, and really the only thing I found are the conditions really related to the density bonus. And that one was related to twenty-five percent market rate rentals for forty years. And that is, as we have heard, David Hall is looking to pursue that or file that, will get a status, I think, if, um, Director Port can be recognized, maybe to fill us in on that. But overall, through all of that research, I look back at the application, the CPA application, where it is really identified and laid out in this really thorough table of all the funding sources. So they are already going to this state. They're already applying for different grants. So it's not like they're coming up with fifty thousand dollars for us to help with the rest of the bill. This old, this bill is much larger, and fifty thousand is just a small paper. Um, part of it is in going back to looking at our housing production plan in terms of our goals in the city, in terms of the housing that is affordable and our stock. We're currently at seven percent. That was told during public comment, I think during the Budget and Finance Committee. Of course, the seven percent is also inclusive of market rate units, because you look at a building, and if you do ten percent affordable, the seven percent actually takes into account some of the market rate as well. So seven percent is fairly low. So for me, there's a couple of things. The applicant is the Y. The details in here do relate, which is an interesting point, that if the funding is, um, not currently or immediately available, it will be the developer is willing to, you know, continue with the project and, uh, provide a loan at zero percent interest rate, which I thought was interesting in the application as well. So with all that said, with all my research done, I will actually support this project, and I look forward to hearing what the other councilors are saying. If they also, I would like to, at some point, have Director Port also respond to some of the things in terms of the status of the density, um, bonus and filing that ultimately be, anything.
Thank you. Other counselors? Counselor Ben.
Yeah, can I just ask a question to, uh, either the chair of budget finance or any of the, uh, participants? The committee members? So, at first, just how many units are there in total? And second, uh, the, the counsel just before me alluded to the fact that there was, um, meant more cost overruns of fifty thousand. How is this allocated to the Y? And why is this fifty thou? Do we have a total number of cost overruns? And was there any explanation of why fifty thousand was allocated to these Y?
Counselor Z.
I can try and respond. I'm sorry. Just a question I had, sorry. So what I understand is that the total project's forty-eight units, ten of which are designated to be, that are supposed to be affordable to. Fifty-eight, sorry. Forty-eight, plus ten, sorry. Fifty-eight, ten of which are supposed to be affordable. Um, the total cost overrun, I don't know, I don't know that we know what the total cost overrun is for the entire project, but the deal between the developer and the Y to purchase, the total overrun there is about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-something in that range, and of that, three thirty, fifty is being asked from, from the city. And as, um, during public comment, they are seeking the, the balance between those two things from a variety of other sources.
Last, I'm sorry.
Just a little bit of a clarification on that. Um, so in the finding, that is the statement of fact, before the ZBA, this is what is said. So there's the forty-eight units, right? And so the finding is a description of the project. And finding two is, this is a quote, "The incorporation of the ten-room lodging house, each with its own bathroom, owned and operated by YWCA, will create ten truly affordable living units." Right? So, so the finding, the statement of fact, is that the project being considered includes the forty-eight mark, uh, the forty-eight units, twenty-five percent of which have to be, uh, kept as market rate apartments for forty years, right? Plus, uh, a handing over by the developer, in essence, of a piece of property to the YWCA. Right? That's the statement of fact. So I, I don't, I don't think you, part of the, the forty-eight units that are not affordable, what, what was promised, what is stated in the findings is that the developer will, will produce the, the lodging house for the YW, all right? And they will be ten, uh, very affordable, that people will afford in years, which I think is slightly different.
Thank you. Other counselors? Well, I have a question for, uh, uh, the planning director. We seem to be getting some comments from counselors on, uh, findings, and is it the position of the Office of Planning and Development that representations and applications? If I say, for example, that my application is to build fifty-eight units, and ten of them will be affordable, that I need not provide the ten affordable units, in fact, unless it's expressly stated as a condition of approval? Is that the position of your office?
That is not the position of our office. Uh, I would point out the distinction in the nuance of the language of the decisions. There is a distinction to be made between the findings and the conditions, all because it makes it harder, uh, mechanically for the office, the, we, this planning administrator, to, uh, enforce at any specific point in time in the development when that is done, even though there have been representations of the overall schedule of that project. There's not something in the ZBA or planning board decisions that may call out when that is due, say, prior to the X occupancy permit, as we try to do these days going forward in permitting.
So the difference is not as obligation, assessment of forcibility?
Primarily, yes.
I see. Uh, any other questions for Director Ford? Any other, uh, counselors? Counselor Z. Oh, no, Counselor Shan is not spoken.
So Director Ford, means the need restriction actually going to be placed? Has it been?
Uh, a draft has been, so developers' restriction has been sent over to KP Law. We're waiting for them to review it and approve it as before, because we want to make sure that whatever they record is actually compliant with the ordinance and the condition of approval, uh, for the rental restriction. Uh, so that's been sent over to KP when that is returned and approved as before. I'll take a look at that, provided everything makes sense, so that, so that developer would say, this is done with the brother city, and it was in progress for.
Yeah, uh, well, Counselor Z and then Counselor Con.
I'm, I'm just trying to put my finger on the debate, and to be honest, this is a bit what we did in committee. We went around in circles. I guess I, I don't understand my colleague's argument about this findings versus conditions, like we're going to spend three hours here. Not the mechanical, I got it. Let's just say, assume for the moment that it's a finding. It is a finding. We know it is. How does that impact your vote on this fifty thousand dollars versus if we're a condition? Are we being threatened here for ransom, essentially, that if we don't allocate this fifty grand, that we're expecting not to get these ten units? Because that's not the underlying foundation to what I'm considering. When we asked Director Port and committee, are we due these ten units? The answer was pretty clear, was yes, we're due these ten units. I, I think the discussion and the debate, both in committee and tonight, are going around a very technical circle that really effectively, what is the heart of, what are we arguing about here? To me, what we're arguing about is, you've put a hundred and fifty grand into this project of CPA funds in the past. The city, through its, uh, permitting authorities, have granted a density bonus to the detriment or expense of the neighborhood, because that's why zoning exists in the first place, to support this project. My understanding, my foundation, is that this developer owes the city those ten units, because that's what they represented during permitting. So I'm not clear about this needle we're trying to thread here. Okay, it's not a condition. What difference does it make? Do you want to put the fifty grand in or not? That's really the question here. And to me, the secondary question is, is there something else, this fifty grand, could be used to go beyond this ten units? Because again, if your underlying assumption is we're getting these ten, you've got fifty grand you can go use to buy more other units, maybe towards something at the Brown School, which we just keep circling around and not doing anything there either. So I guess I, I'm trying to get to the heart of the debate, and I, I'm not clear on this technical discussion about conditions versus findings. And last thing I'll say is just, again, extension of logic, very simply. If the point here is that a developer can come in and say anything they want, and as long as they're making sure it doesn't get into the conditions, then what they've said means nothing, that's kind of a dangerous path to go down. I think that's what we're trying to do.
Counselor Con, uh, Concar was next, and Counselor Con.
Yeah, let me put it this way. First of all, it is the finding. If at the end of the day, the city does not get a hillside project that includes ten deeply affordable units, I have a problem. Right? At the end of the day, this, the, the finding, the description of the project is a, it would include the, you know, the forty-eight units plus the YW lodging house, right? Where the condition comes in is, 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 uh, as you said, we're not privy to the negotiations between the YW, uh, and the developer, right? The, you might, for instance, if, if the condition, a condition was, the developer must assist the YWCA and cover all overruns and costs. That's a condition, right? That's before you get the, you know, the, you know, the density exception, and before you get a special permit, you must make sure that the Y has the money to do it, and you'll make up the difference. That would be a condition. I don't see that as a condition anywhere, right? What, what, what the, what the, uh, developer said is that he will, you know, turn over the YWCA property, but there's nothing specific about, you know, how that would be paid for. I mean, you know, we'll, we'll talk about this later, because life is complex in here, all right? But that's my distinction, right? Again, at the end of the day, you need to have that lodging house there, all right? Uh, but there's no condition in set that stipulates how it will be paid for.
We have the benefit of, of a planning director. Uh, should Counselor, I just want to be clear. In the approval documents, I think Counselor Con, there are something like six or seven.
Sounds correct.
Did, did they uniformly say, uh, that, uh, land will be donated to the YWCA? Or did they say that ten affordable units would be provided?
Yeah, they did not all say that. They, uh, they did specify that the ten units would be created, but, uh,
Okay, so.
That's the only consistent thing I can.
All right. I want to be clear. It's not, they didn't, they didn't say, you must give land to the YWCA. They said, we want ten affordable units.
And. There's lots of narrative in the background, as reminded by the advocate. Some of that is repeated in the decisions. Not all the decisions are, are written verbatim, as I'm going to say. Um, but the CPA decisions specify and specifically call out the rental restriction. Uh, they do not call out the, um, the affordable units in that same way as, uh, you know, mechanically.
I know, but did they say you must donate land? That's my question.
They do not have that as a condition.
All right. Counselor Con and Counselor.
Yeah, uh, thank you, council president. So, again, I, I have the documents here, and so this is again where, um, in terms, I think the question from the counselor, uh, for Board One was, is this, do we feel unafforded to have to, I, I can't remember actually how you said it, because it was a while ago, but I, I, I guess I want to respond in terms of my perspective of the fifty thousand dollars, and in my reviewing, and again, not someone being on the planning board or the city meeting, but in terms of looking to see that the decisions, the, and to look at the conditions, and there are findings. So I'm looking at these documents kind of anew, so I, I really appreciate the guidance here, but let me just step back a little bit and just give my perspective if I just look at the CPA application. And in the C P A application, there's not even mention of the developer, right? It's the Y is the applicant. And so the developer aspects came up during Budget Finance Committee. And I think what initially came to my mind was the inclusionary zoning. And when did that kick in? And if that developer was on the hook to provide that? And at that point, you know, twenty sixteen is when the permits were initially pulled and filed. And that the inclusionary zoning actually passed in October of twenty seventeen. So that was like one thing that was sitting in my mind, is what was our inclusionary zoning at the time? The second thing, and I'll just go back more from, again, the picture of lodging houses in Uver Court. So we currently have one that's owned by the Y W C A, so they're really the only ones that have lodging houses. And so this is going to be the second one that the city is going to have an opportunity to have. Now, if you look at the difference between what's currently there, which, with what this project is, for those of us who took the tour, this is pretty foundational. I mean, we cannot ignore the fact that this is probably going to be the first of its kind in our state. And it's a lodging house. It's not going to be market rate rentals, it's not going to be condos, it's, it's, this are lodging rooms. That are going to fit a need in our city at a location that's going to be accessible for anyone who's of any type of. Uh, uh, working environment, who walk to work, to get to the transit. It is an opportunity and it's a benefit to our city. I mean, I can't ignore that. I mean, that's there. So the semantics of what came up in our Budget and Finance Committee is the reason why I looked at each of these documents. And again, the reason why I go back to the distinction. Between what is a finding and what's a condition, and why there are those separations, even in documents like this. Again, the Hillside Plan Reviews, in trying to talk to like, at least Jennifer is who I talked a lot with, the zoning enforcement officer. She was in favor of this project and the expenditure of fifty thousand after I walked me to these documents. So again, I can only go by my own research and what I'm trying to find out, so Director Ford, if you have anything contradictory or if you have a couple of things on this matter, I'd really appreciate your.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'll try to keep it focused. Um, I think the question is exactly that. Do we want to? Provide another fifty thousand dollars to the applicant, which is the Y W C A? We're going, it's pretty simple. Um, I too have gone through all those seven documents. I have had conversations, I've attempted to understand what the argument was after listening to the, the Budget Finance Committee meetings. Which I wish all of you had. Um, semantically. It's difficult for me to hear these, uh, trying to cover cost overruns. I mean, we had one heck of a year in twenty twenty, where the pandemic certainly had a lot to do. With, uh, the cost that's involved in putting together this building. Also, we need to really keep in mind what is going on down there. If you take a look at the effort that David Hall is making on what was. A toxic pit, the man has stepped in and removed, you know, three thousand pounds of toxic, you know, ash. And is making it a, a wonderful, and, and he's going way out on a limb. Zero, uh, uh, based, um, housing complex. It's, it's amazing to read about it, and if you haven't, uh, please do. So, so there is, this is, this is cutting edge. This is, this is an answer to our, our master plan in terms of, uh, so you see in terms of energy use, et cetera, et cetera. So disparage him, I, I find extremely upsetting. And just a little bit of history, we're, we're talking about C P A funds here. Yes, they are taxpayer money. But it's taxpayer money that in two thousand and two, we, we approved. We've said, okay, we'll let two percent, we'll, we'll, we'll pay an additional two percent of our property taxes towards this fund. And it has worked very well. Mike has said it's done a wonderful job, and the committee's done a wonderful job of allocating these funds. And, and. If, if we, if we don't use this money, this fifty thousand dollars, it stays in that fund, it's not like it goes back to, it's not general fund money. Where it slowly, you know, maybe we could take it off of the tax rules, it just goes into the, it stays in the, uh, C P A account. And yes, maybe that fifty thousand dollars could be used for something else. We can't dictate that. We only have the opportunity of saying, no, we can't say where else we want it to go. And that was, that was suggested in, in the meeting. Listening to that meeting, I, I, I was a little bit appalled, the, the. There, there was a statement made that this fifty thousand dollars. I, I could read it exactly, but I'll paraphrase it. That the decision has to be made by the developer, if he does about this fifty thousand dollars, that he either pays it. To, to fill in the gap, and, and maybe he needs to make a decision to not go on a European vacation or buy a boat. That statement was made about the developer. This is, again, this is a gentleman who has. The Tanner, he, he's recovered the Tanneri building, it's got, uh, electrical, you know, uh, solar arrays on top. This project's full of solar arrays, this, this project is, again, cutting edge. Um, he's moved a building, saved a building, the, the Arts Association. He's, he's a giver of the community, and it was suggested. That he, this fifty thousand dollars, he's going to have to either cough it up or, and, and, and cough it up, he might have to give up the European vacation. I, I'm appalled at that, but. So this is the Hillside Center for Sustainable Living, and it has ten deeply affordable. Units in it. We're, we're on the brink of, of needing to talk with the, the Department of Housing and, and, uh, uh, Development. In order to plead our case, so that we can avoid forty D projects. We're working hard to, to make that happen. We turned this down. What are we saying about affordable housing? Because of some, I don't know, convoluted impressions of what was said, what business said, what, who, who's paying for what. I mean, it was even questioned that this, that his three, that David Hall's three hundred, uh, uh, three hundred thousand dollar. Price tag on the property that he gave to the Y, that, that number was even questioned. I think, I think it was, you know. Apparently, or some, some number. It was disparaging. And I would really encourage you, what is the real question? It's fifty thousand dollars from C P A fund, that was fully vetted through this committee or this commission, that has worked very well, the, the C P A, the C P C. That has worked for, very well for years. This is a no brainer. This is, speaks highly of the Community of Newbury Court in our, in our affirmation of, um, affordable housing. I urge you, get out of the weeds, it's a matter of fifty thousand dollars, yes or no? Thank you.
Counselor Tom, please. Yes. You say, or? Uh, Counselors. Who do you yield, the Counsel President?
Yes, yes.
Counselor.
Uh, I was not going to speak at all. I didn't think it was necessary. I, I think the counselors had already, until Counselor at large just spoke, we had the issues framed in a way that we should make a decision. But I was accused several times, I'm the one who spoke against this at the committee meeting. I was accused several times as disparaging, Mr. President, the developer. And I think that's exactly why we're not going to agree on this point. It is not personal. It is not personal. When a developer, any developer, comes before a board in this city and says, I'm going to do X, Y, Z. And the board says, that sounds great, because you're doing X, Y, Z, we're going to give you A, B, C. And talk about semantics and in the weeds, that was the purpose of my question to the director. If you make a representation and it's a finding, it is essentially axiomatic to the project. The ten units are part of the project. The applicant for the project was Paul in Moscow, not the Y W C A. The boards, who by the way, rendered decisions after we adopted an inclusionary housing difference, after. Over a course of years, and the project, although it was originally approved in twenty sixteen, is still not. They relied on those representations. And again, as I said at the committee meeting. It doesn't matter how good a man David Hall is, he may be friends to all of us. It also doesn't matter how laudable the affordable housing units are. That's axiomatic. That was essentially the consideration that the boards relied on, in part to grant the relief. So of course we value that. But what you're saying here is, is that in Newbury Court, it matters who the personalities are. That rules and fairness mean nothing. That in this city, what matters is who you know. And if you're a popular person, and you make a representation to our board, we're going to let you out of it if we like. And that's not the way government should work. The representation was that there were ten units to be offered. The developer must honor its commitments. And if it causes the purpose of my alluding to, what it might cost the developer. Whether it's a trip to Europe, a new boat, is, the point is, it's not our concern. We do not ensure the profitability of developments. That's not what we do. And that's why. I just want to be clear here, this is, should never be about personnel. If, if Mr. Hall were a despicable human being, should we vote no? Absolutely not. The personalities do not matter. It's the rule of law.
Thank you. Counselor Dunn.
So. I am standing here, a lot of times I come in here and I'm undecided on this issue. I am undecided on this issue. The two speeches ago didn't help. That tone and tenor of that did not help, it didn't answer any of my questions. I'm still trying to figure out why the Y is responsible for this. And in turn, why are they coming to us to ask us for it? Why, why the money was allocated of three hundred and thirty thousand, I don't care who has a boat or who puts, uh. Uh, uh, solar panels on top of their buildings. They make a lot of money. That's why people do what they do. Business people are not in the business of giving away things and not making any money. And that's okay with me. I really don't care. I'm just trying to figure out right now, I don't understand either side's arguments, to be honest with you. And so, and it looks like it's going to come down to a pretty close vote, so someone answer my question. Why is this allocated to the Y? And, and why, I mean, is the developer on his forty eight piece, you know, is he not going to take any of the hits of the increase? I am not saying that I don't understand that we just went through a pandemic. I get that, you know, I work in the hospitality industry, I get it. Um, so what I'm trying to figure out is why the Y, and then it consequence us to bear in some of the burden. And, and if I, if it's a logical rational answer, I would tend to agree. It's, it's, it's C P A funding and it goes to, to, uh, you know, affordable housing. But I still, I really, I literally don't understand either, maybe it's just me, I just don't understand either side's argument right now.
Thank you. And then the Counselor, that's my, I believe. Counselor Wallace.
Yeah, I, I share the sentiments of the, that large counselor. It sounds like the Y is in a bond. Um, but we don't know how they got there and what the deal was with the developer. Um, I feel like there's two ways to look at this, one being, we need to hold the developer accountable, which is a hundred percent true. They have to honor their work. Then the other piece of it is, do we want to help out the Y? They're stuck in a place for some reason. Um, and it sounds like they're not going to get money from the developer. It's too bad that David Hall wasn't able to, to comment, because that might have shed some light on. What their agreement was, whether that matters or not. But I think in a sense, it, it's a bit of a policy question, um, personal preference and. Holding the developer accountable and setting a precedent versus helping out the Y. And, and it's tough, but I, I kind of feel for the Y in this situation. And, and also, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was approved previously. How much is the right amount? Would two hundred thousand been approved several years ago, remember that was? So it's kind of a call on how much do we want to give the Y? So it is a difficult situation, but there are some answers, lots of answers we don't know.
Okay.
I'm just looking at this as what was put in front of us, it was a C P A ask from the Y. Fifty thousand dollars for affordable housing. And I read through the applications and C P A online and, you know, I look at it this way, it's the Y. They're the only organization or community that's really truly doing affordable housing. And on top of that, even with that line item in the, uh, application that said, you know, David Hall will give Moscow, and they will give a zero percent mortgage. For the next two years so they can continue the project, like, why do we put the Y through this? It's fifty thousand dollars. That's all they're asking for. It's the Y. So I would support this.
So I don't know if I'll give an adequate institute questions, but I'm going to tell you how I arrived at the decision to vote in favor of the fifty thousand dollars. Right? Um, so first of all, um, I, I did affordable housing with the city of Lawrence. We, I had Graham from HUD, uh, and I worked with the city, we did a focused, uh, pretty innovative, uh, affordable housing project. And what I'm going to tell you is, it's extremely tough. These kinds of projects are very, very, very tough. And we had one project, and, and they entail a lot of problems. We had one project that, that, that included Mass Historical, right? It included the Lawrence Family, uh, uh, Development Incorporated that brought in youth film. Uh, we went after C B G funds, which this was between C P A funds, Lawrence is an entitlement community. You know, the planning department in Lawrence opposed our effort, right? Because we had, we had created a not-for-profit five oh one C three housing corporation. They wanted to, they wanted to send that money to help the city, all right, and to support subsidies. We were trying to concentrate in one place, so we had to, we had, we had to go to the, to the city council, all right? Uh, and the city council had to hold a rule with the city. These are tough, tough projects to undertake. Right? Uh, look, look at the funding for this project that the Y W have to put together. So they've got Hall and Matt, Moscow, two hundred eighty thousand dollars, now you're there. Hall and Moscow, private donation, three hundred thousand dollars. Charles Dancomes, one hundred thousand dollars. Mass Housing Partnership, three hundred thousand. D H C D, D H C D, Government Housing Community Development, three hundred thousand dollars. The C P A original hundred fifty, right? Then you have this gap, right? Um, they have, the, the Y says they have the responsibility to make up the gap. Right? That's why they came in for fifty thousand dollars. They have also identified Franklin Square House Foundation as a possible source to make up the rest of that gap. The Federal Home Loan Bank, right, under thirty thousand, People's United, all right, and the Institution for Savings. Right? So they are trying, I mean, they're desperate to try, this is a, this is a tough, tough project. It's a green project, it's, it's breaking grounds, uh, it will be a model, right? With, with, uh, you know, time to get to zero energy, it's a tough project to undertake. So they have a lot of problems, a lot of funding. The Y is the lead agency to do this lodging house. It is decently affordable, it's the highest need we hear, we have, all right? Uh, and, and so I'm not to promise, they're trying to, the fifty thousand dollars indicates that the city is still committed to this project. So they leverage that fifty thousand, right? They go to Franklin Square House Foundation, right? And their next cycle, they, they missed a cycle because of the pandemic, their next cycle starts December, uh, this December. And they go to them and they say, look, the city still supports us, this helps, you can leverage the fifty thousand in C P A funds, right? And that goes for it, that's the first one. Second point, I'm going to reiterate what, what others have said. Uh, I see no condition that is of the character of a quick Trump wall. There's no condition that says you will not get your, uh, the density exclusion, you will not get a special permit unless you do these projects. Just not there. And thirdly, I gotta, I gotta reiterate, uh, what the at-large counsel said, is I am concerned. Which you did, with. Not the reality, not, not, not the substance, right? We know we're willing to give fifty thousand, uh, for affordable housing, it doesn't go in the Y, right? We're trying to do that. I'm, I'm concerned about the perception that D H C D. And I, and you know the debate statewide, the communities that look like us are not committed to affordable housing, we're trying to keep it out. Right? And here fifty thousand dollars, right? And at the same time, we're, we're trying to get D H C D. And at the same time, we're we're trying to get DHCD to come in and say, you know, we think you don't have to, you you will not get 40B. You will not get that Evelyn, uh, Evelyn Day NED project, right? We're going to them and we're asking for them to make a decision on that. And what's the perception, right? When they, when we're not willing to help this, this very original needed project by the Y. And I'm concerned that the details will be lost to them. So therefore, I'm voting $50,000 to help the Y out, get this done. That's how I would have that, hold that up.
Thank you. I I just wanted to respond. I think the at-large counselor and the Ward Four Counselor both sort of gave a good idea of where some folks might be. And there is no answer to your question. And the reason there's no answer to your question is because we are trying to insert ourselves into a deal that we are not a part of. And we are never going to answer the question, even if we had public comment, we still wouldn't know. Because somewhere on paper exists a deal between the developer and the Y for a purchase. And apparently that governs when the price can increase and how much and when it will be set. We're never going to see that. We're not privy, we weren't part of negotiating originally. It wasn't requested as part of the original 150,000. So I'm sorry, that answer is not going to, not going to come. You're going to have to work with what you have. That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing I want to say is that I think that there's been a lot of emotional arguments about affordable. But there's also a perception that if we, if we fund this, that we are not holding developers accountable. So when they come in and they say, we're going to give you affordable, how does DHCD look at that? You can shake your head, but it's the same, it's the other side of the same coin of the same argument. So come in and promise the world and then don't deliver. And the last thing I'm going to say is the reason you, the way you know that this is frankly, a little bit screwed up from a governance perspective, and there's a deal we're not a part of, is you actually don't know if this 50,000 will lead to 10 units any more than you knew that 150 would lead to 10 units three years ago. Everybody voted at the time on the board and said, here's your density bonus. We assume this will lead to 10 units. We said, here's 150 grand, we assume it will lead to 10. And so now we're voting on 50. We actually still don't know what that agreement says. So why, why not next year to have another $100,000 for a new overrun? Because three months from now or three minutes from now, another thing is discovered in the continuation of the project. So we actually have no surety that this 50 grand yields anything. And, you know, the 150, which was done, we could probably rewind and play the tape from three years ago. And everybody's probably saying, this is great, we're going to get the 10 units. And probably play the tape of the ZBA meetings, this is great, we're getting 10 green units. And apparently, none of those things were true. And so how is this one any more true than anything else? So that's how you know that this is a bit of a muck. And I already said it before, but I am sympathetic to the Y. I just don't see a way to get out of this hole. Uh, and I thought long and hard this weekend about are there any amendments or conditions one could offer? And so I welcome that if that's a way out of this box. But to tell you, it would have to basically be an assurance that this is the end of the road here. And how do we know we're getting the 10 units? And when are we getting them? And we're we're trying to back into a deed restriction that, you know, maybe was the subject of miscommunication or whatever, not on these 10, but on the other ones that were supposed to be, uh, you know, uh, apartments for 40 years. So somebody, so I I'm sorry to tell you, I had to stand up and say, there is no answer to your question. You have what you have, and it's the best you can do.
Before we proceed further, the mayor wishes to speak. I would advise counselors to avoid questioning motives as we avoid questioning the motives of others during the course of debate. The motives of the developer for the presentations and things that were said during the early going on this project, unless you have evidence otherwise, let's not just resurge the reputations of individuals or question their motives without something more concrete than than that. This is a complicated enough issue without really personal attention. And I think that's in part what Counselor, pretty much Counselor President I remember was saying. It's not about personalities. It's about circumstances we find ourselves, and please try to focus on those elements that we can understand and then make their votes. Counselor Khan, before you speak, Mayor Holliday is joining us. Mayor Holliday, if you'd like to chime in here, would you wait for Counselor Khan? Counselor Khan, you can recognize.
Oh, no, but. All right, thank you. Um, I I think I was trying to also answer the questions raised by the counselor from Ward Four as well as the other at-large counselor, counselor. And and I guess they're kind of at the position I was during our Budget Finance Committee. And it wasn't an easy one. So I I agree with everything said by everyone, there's, there's a lot of aspects here. Uh, so I can just share, you know, here, work with what we have, I can just share, you know, working with what we have. And in looking at the 2016 CPC application from the Y, it was very clear to me from the beginning that this lodging house was going to be managed by them. And they they were taking ownership. They were providing the land, they were actually providing the developer to make the lodging house. So that's why I did go through my reviews that I did and I talked about earlier. But looking at the presentation that was done to the community as well on lodging house itself, um, and and looking at the needs that are met in the city, I I am very comfortable, which will end up being now $200,000 of CPC funds, let's be honest about that. It's the 150 plus the 50. So when someone, I think public comment said 5,000 per unit, it's not much. It's about 20,000 per unit. And that is a lot. I I understand that. However, again, the needs met is where, looking at the presentation's done, you know, two units are for homeless folks, six units for incomes below 28,000, four units for incomes below 47,000. That's a need met for the city. And I will just leave it at that. That's in the presentation on the website, a lot of details about the benefits, which to me significantly outweigh some of the other things we may have talked about here. Uh, but this is why I will be supporting the $50,000 for the CPC grant. Thank you.
Counselor Dowd, who may recognize the mayor first?
I would appreciate it, the counsel.
Does this relate directly to?
It it does. My question is the one that precipitated all of this, so that's.
There you go, Counselor Dowd.
Look, I I can't say I'm happy with, well, this is all the information we have. It doesn't sound like a couple of key people were at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. I personally don't feel comfortable. If if we come down to process and I have to make a vote on a process and and I have to make, I'm concerned that we don't have a deed restriction. I'm concerned that maybe there's, there's some voice having given to the fact that that when the 10, how the units have to be delivered, whether it's a condition, whether it's a finding. I personally, before we gave any money towards this, yes, it's only $50,000, but it's $50,000. It's like, I can't believe we're having, we're talking about $50,000. Sorry, that's just, my mind doesn't work that way. I can't do it that way. It could be $10,000. I want, I just as much as all of you, and I think it does, you know, again, we're not even sure to to the last speaker's point. We're not even sure that that's actually going to happen after giving 200,000. So that that disturbed it too. So it disturbed me, someone telling me, this is all we're going to get, we have to work with it. This is too important on both sides. $50,000 is too important, and the benefits of this project is too important. I think it should go back in the committee. I think you should get the people there that you didn't have there. I think you should get David Hall there to answer some of these questions. I still have these questions. I don't feel comfortable voting on $50,000 and when I have these questions. I don't feel comfortable voting no either because of the importance of this part. I I so I am really very uncomfortable with where this is right now. And and but if you push me on a process vote, I I I don't think the process is finished here. So I would likely vote no. So I I and I don't want to do that.
Mayor Holliday, I'd like to present here.
Thank you. I actually was going to offer exactly what Counselor Devon said. I think you have a couple of pieces of information that are really, and I know that's a first part. So, but I think that there's clearly a commitment to affordable housing here. And I think that this was and is a very, very unique, complex, very, very difficult project that David Hall has taken on. And I don't think we can negate what he did in terms of, as Counselor Vogel talked about, taking and talk about light in terms of what was there at, and toxins in this, in this property that we didn't get a dime from for years. He paid all the back taxes on it. He put together this incredible model that is being watched by the world. And part of this, and yes, it was kind of an afterthought, was to create the affordable housing. There, it's almost built. Drive down Route 1, you'll see it on the deli. The 10 units are are there. We are going to get the 10 units. And we need this desperately. We need to get up to that 10%. We cannot let these large ODB developers come in and dictate what's going to happen in our city. So I would suggest that we send it back to the community. Quickly have a meeting with David Hall and John Beeman to work out those last couple of questions and then bring it back out, and you should be able to vote in like 15 minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jersey, your hands up. Thank you for your.
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I, I, as Chair of Budget, I I won't oppose, I look to my colleagues. If we really want to bring it back, I mean, we, we, everybody's welcome to Budget and Finance. We always welcome applicants to come in. Some applicants did come and spoke to us about theirs. Uh, in this case, we had a few members of the Affordable Housing Trust. Here's, and and maybe that's where this goes, but I'm just going to suggest to you an idea that may be a way out of this box that I was just thinking about. In the past with CPC, we've always thought about making sure we're getting something of value for the, for the taxpayers, for the residents when we grant CPA. For example, in in previous years, we have had lengthy, longer than tonight's debate about preservation restrictions, right? To make sure that we're getting something so we can actually show somebody, a voter or a resident, say, look, we got you this PR, you didn't have it before. So my suggestion here is, you know, if we're finally coming around to the conclusion that we are getting the 10 units and we're past that, which maybe not all of us are, but some of us are, what else can we, what can we do to justify this 50 grand? And let me ask you two questions, if I may, Mr. President, through the, through the, through the chair. One is, can we ask for Newburyport residents to get preference on these 10 units? Or even write a first refusal on these units? That could be something that I could say, here you go, 50 grand. We already knew we were getting the 10 units. We already got that because we had this zoning thing, we got the density bonus, we already gave 150, that's close. Give me something new. Can we get 10, can we get, uh, at least give Newburyport residents first crack? Mr. President, is that something we just do?
To respond to that question.
Sure, sure, if I could do that particular question. There isn't any in the premise right now that addresses that, but that certainly could be something that's worked out in discussions with the YW.
So maybe that's an avenue of discussion. And the second one is, you know, are these, these 10 units guaranteed to be affordable? Uh, because again, if if we're trying to close a gap where maybe we don't have 100% harmony, I I believe they are, but are they going to be deed restricted?
Yeah, my understanding is that these units will count on the city's subsidized housing inventory as approved by DHCD. So the discussion will.
All right, so. Perhaps those are two, two buds to a conversation about something we can negotiate. So I'll make a motion to, um, I'll I'll withdraw the motion to approve and make, and who was the second one?
I think I.
And then I'll, and then I'll make a motion that we send this item.
As a process of purchase.
Yes.
You're drawing a motion to approve.
I have the job I have.
And I'm making a motion that we send Project 1 to Budget Finance.
Second.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, and second is that, uh, this, this, I am to be recommitted to Budget and Finance. Counselor, there.
I'm going to make a suggestion here. Uh, I won't, I don't want to make the part of the, uh, of the motion. Uh, but I would like to strongly suggest that at least the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust be present, and maybe as many members as possible be present. Look, this is their area of expertise. It is not our area of expertise. That's painfully evident from how I collected this stuff myself. So please, reach out to them. They, they can help us find a path to this.
I would just like to follow on also that there, all of those documents are readily available. And if you get the opportunity to go in and take a look at it and read through all of these things, it's fascinating. And be prepared for that meeting because I think you'll, you'll find that some of these assertions or some of these, these ideas may or may not be in there. So I would recommend that. And also, any of the information that you can get, what what is happening down there at the Hillside area will be very helpful as well.
Thank you, Jersey.
I just, I just want to state publicly, and I I will be happy to email, but we have a standing meeting of Budget and Finance on Thursday, September 16th, this Thursday. We always meet the Thursday after council. We will start at 6:30. This will be the first item on the agenda so that everybody who's listening is invited. But I will make a personal ask. I can't make your waterfront meeting, sorry, but that that's 6:30 on Thursday.
If it's. I think it's a response to that time issue.
No, it wasn't. I'll wait my turn.
Right. From the chair, is it possible for us to move our meeting on Thursday?
Yes, it's possible.
Thank you. Now, I believe it was Counselor Dowd.
Yes, I will save for the record. I know you can't force anybody to, but it would be important to my vote David Hall to be there just to answer questions and help clarify things. And again, I, I, I'm sure everybody's going to be polite. There's nothing, I'm not going to be asking any intense questions.
Thank you. Counselor Khan, hands is up for a long time. Counselor, go.
I, I, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that this day after tomorrow, and we're talking about bringing in a number of people to answer all of these questions. Can can we possibly reach out to this body that we're hoping to bring in and see if we can get some type of consensus as to who can be there, even if it's on some other night? I mean, that, otherwise, we're liable to just kind of keep going around and around.
Well, please, this is a point of the court, my answer. Can this meeting be posted for a busy consultant?
Which I'm certain.
Yes.
Budget and Finance typically, yeah, thank you. As Chair of Budget and Finance, we posted the Tuesday after council. And it, and it waited for referrals to occur. It does comply with the 48 hour. I'll just say, I heard you. I won't bring this back until we have those people come in. If it's this Thursday, great. If not, it waits for another cycle for our next committee meeting. But we will honor the the general sentiment here, which is to bring people in and try and see if we can bring this out in a better way next time.
Thank you. I think we've gone on this one sufficiently, unless there's some, uh, so I didn't say that here. Counselor.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify for the record that we did have, that there actually, there are two co-chairs of the Affordable Housing Trust, Mr. President. They were both at the committee meeting. So I won't wipe them again. But the issue had nothing to do with the affordable housing, had to do with zoning. So I think, uh, I did read all of the approval motions, all seven of them for me. But it's true that Mr. Hall did not attend. So if he comes this time, you know, we can, we can have the benefit of his participation.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for a roll call vote, and the motion is.
The motion to refer the matter back to Budget Finance. You do it as a voice vote.
I prefer when you do this on a roll call.
Roll call. On the motion, Counselor Vogel. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z, yes. Counselor Conwell.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane, yes. Counselor McCollum.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tonto. Counselor Ogden.
Yes.
That's your names.
Thank you. Chair. Well, the past, what are you doing?
Continuing CPC. So I I'd like to next make a motion to approve Project Number 2, Newburyport Rental Assistance in the amount of $200,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a request from the Affordable Housing Trust this time. The amount is 200,000. Um, as as the President had mentioned, there were some representatives, chairs from the Affordable Housing Trust, and they reported that they have done this program in the past, as recently as last year. This was a successful program. My recollection is they had $100,000 last time, and they've exhausted all of the funds. Um, we did ask in committee if they had any further detail on the expenditure, and they did send forth additional details about the breakdown of the spending and so forth. Um, this is fast action money, if you will. So if there's folks that really need immediate assistance with rental costs, and the motion in committee was to recommend approval, the vote was 3 to 0, and it comes to you with that recommendation.
Any further debate or discussion? Do a voice vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pros?
Next, Mr. President, is motion to approve Custom House Door Restoration, $43,832, Project Number 3.
We've written it in.
Um, you heard during public comment, this is related to a restoration project. We talked about the preservation restriction on the building, which is now in place. If you recall, a couple of cycles ago, there were some questions about an old PR versus new PR. Uh, the recommendation in committee was 2 to 1 to approve.
Further discussion, debate by counselors, seeing none. Counselors, vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was, uh, I viewed the custom house. We went down there and took a look. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was, uh, I viewed the, uh, custom house. We went down there and took a look at it. It was really quite interesting. Not only is it simply just the restoration of the door, but, um, some, uh, storm surge protection. They've done a remarkable job of bringing that building back around, and, um, if you haven't been in there, there, there's new just, uh, displays. It's, it's, they've done a great job. So this is more than just the restoration of the doors. It's also, um, putting protection up, uh, in the back there so that should, should floodwaters come up, it'll be protected. I would strongly encourage a yes vote. Thank you.
Counselor Connel is next.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I have to admit to you that I'm torn on this, and, and I'll explain why. Uh, in the nineteen nineties, I served on the custom house board. I've supported the custom house to the extent that it was possible with financial donations through the years. So I have a personal commitment to the, uh, institution and to the building, and that's, that's where I, I get stuck. You may recall several years ago, Counselor Z, and Counselor Ogden and myself, uh, met with the New Report Redevelopment Authority and encouraged them not to hand the property over to the Maritime Society because, we argued, of the inconsistent nature of the financial stability of the Maritime Society. Now, it's, it's a wonderful organization, but through the years, it's had its ups and had its downs, but we were, we were told repeatedly um, that the, uh, applicants, well, I'm sorry, the, the, well, the applicants for the, the, for the award of the building, that meaning, meaning the Maritime Society, were on the road to recovery. That they had a plan for building a, uh, a more sustainable future, uh, through the purposes, through the, uh, through the vehicles of building an endowment, and that they were fully capable of maintaining this structure, and then made considerable headway on the roof, some of the waterproofing issues that have existed for many years. I credit them for that. I, I don't, however, feel entirely comfortable such a short time after the NRA awarded them the structure and then dissolved. Um, giving an award for the reconstruction of this, this doorway. I think it's wonderful. Uh, I support, uh, having it done. It's a, it's a, the, the building itself is an historic artifact of great significance, not just to the city of Newburyport, but to the nation. Nonetheless, when they said, we have the wherewithal to maintain this building and to improve it, bring it up to its, to its former glory, I, I took that seriously. I disagreed with it. I didn't think they did. And for them to, at this point, come back to the CPC to ask for funds to do what they promised that they would do, I'm, I'm genuinely torn. I want to preserve the building. I don't want to, uh, award, um, promises that I, I'm not sure at this point were made in good faith.
Other counselors on this, uh, Vogel, the motion is to approve the subvention. Seeing none, uh, let's do a roll call.
Roll call on the custom house door restoration. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Connel.
No.
Counselor Devlin.
No.
Counselor Con.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCollum.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Tonto.
Yes.
Counselor Ogden. Meeting six, receiving one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, motion passes.
Next, uh, motion to approve project four, forty-five, seven, one, seven, to the Cushing House for Landscape Restoration Phase Three. This is the final phase according to the application for this project. Um, it is under category of Historic Preservation. The, they're, goes through this description a little bit about what they plan to do, uh, in terms of this final, uh, phase of the, of the restoration. But I would say that the most important part is that, uh, there is a, a new PR that's expected. It has been started, but hasn't been finished, and, uh, will not, the funds will not be released until the new PR is completed and reported. The committee recommended approval three to zero.
Sorry, so, number four, number four, Cushing House.
Landscape Restoration.
Okay. Further discussion or debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Motion to approve project number five, Garrison Birthplace Signage, eighteen hundred dollars. Okay, thank you. So this is in, in the amount of eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, we did hear from the applicant, this is to create, uh, two interpretive signs at the Garrison Garden section of, of Atwood Park. Um, the total amount, well, the initial request was thirty-six ninety-four, but it was revised to eighteen hundred. We learned that the reason it was changed is because, um, the New Report Bank will be paying half, so it's about eighteen hundred and eighteen hundred dollars. Um, this has been through the Parks Commission where they discussed this, and the locations, and a little bit about the signage. Um, the application goes into further detail about, you know, whose design assignment, the fee for creation of the sign is included in the project budget. The committee, uh, did endorse this three to zero.
Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Motion to approve projects, uh, number six, which is a hundred thousand dollars to the Open Space Reserve Fund. So this is a transfer essentially into the open space fund, not for any specific acquisition, but in preparation for potential future acquisitions. One of the rules of CPC is that you must spend a portion of your, uh, of your intake, uh, to, towards open space. So as is typically done in the past, when there isn't a, a specific open, open space opportunity before us, we place it into the Open Space Fund, which can then later be tapped when an opportunity does present itself. It's a hundred thousand dollars, and, um, uh, this will help bolster the reserves for open space acquisition in the future. The committee endorsed it three to zero.
Other counselors on this side, seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Okay, motion to approve project number seven, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I do wanna tell you that this was amended in committee, um, so first, let me just run through what the, what the request is and then what the amendments were. So this, I perhaps should have said motion to approve as amended in committee. Um, this is a request from the Office of Planning and Development, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to be used towards the New Report Waterfront Park, Central Waterfront Park. But there is no specific, um, path for the funds yet. It's not designated to any one specific purpose, say, design or any aspect of construction. That was probably the largest subject of our discussion. The best idea I think we have at the moment is that potentially this money could be used, uh, as part of a park, uh, uh, application, which is a grant program by the state, with the idea being that we'd be able to show some, some, uh, commitment, I guess, in the form of having these funds. Um, so we discussed the language at length, and we, we added, um, two amendments. Um, one is, um, that prior to the expenditure of any of these funds, uh, either towards a proposed, uh, match towards any grant application, under this award, the applicant, uh, pardon me, let me leave again. Prior to expenditure of any funds for utilization of these funds as a proposed match towards any grant application under this award, the applicant shall return to the City Council for approval of said expenditure for any grant application, and I'll explain that. And the second one is, this award shall expire in one year following award unless otherwise extended by the City Council. So the first one basically says, we're, we're putting the two fifty into the, into the bank account, let's call it, but if you wanna spend it, uh, for planning and the, the Office of Planning and Development will suspend it, or they wanna use it in a grant, either come show us the grant application or come and tell us exactly what they are planning to spend it on. And the second one, as you know, there's typically an, an off-council or out-of-council process for extending awards that maybe go beyond a certain time with CPC. So sometimes you can get an award, but it doesn't work out. So, uh, there, this, in this case, we'd be conditioning the approval that, you know, if we can't get anywhere within a year, to at least come back and check in with the council to ask for an award. Uh, both amendments passed two to zero in committee. Uh, we, we have one Counselor absent at the moment, and then, um, the whole thing comes to you, two to zero, to approve as it has been amended. And so, um, that's, those are the two amendments' conditions, if you will, on, on the award.
Counselor Vogel. Thank you, Mr. President, for the, for the chair. Um, are we allowed to do that? Are we, are, are we allowed to, um, amend the, the award like, like that? I, I, I'm, I'm, my, my brain is not functioning. I thought that we were a yes or no on these. I didn't know that we could amend and, and put conditions on.
Uh, we have amended, in, in my five years, we have amended and added conditions to various awards over the years. Um, we do need a, a affirmative recommendation by the CPC on a project. In other words, we can't just say we're gonna take this and appropriate it to something completely different. But, um, as long as we have a recommendation from CPC, that's the Community Preservation Committee, uh, then we are, we are, and we have, uh, conditioned things. For example, uh, the PRs, the preservation restrictions that I mentioned, that's probably the most public example I could think of, where now we just do it as a matter of course, that we just add that as a condition to any project like that. So I'm not aware of any issues with less conditioning in this way. I, I certainly, if you wish, would defer through the Finance Director or the Planning Director if they want.
Oh, I won't be the Finance Director, but, uh, I don't think there's any, uh, issue with the special conditions. I guess my counsel has happened some before. I think I did mention in committee that we're all conditioned, so. Um, there, there are conditions that could be problematic for the type of the project because it requires more, uh, process to try to keep those applied on the sources, but, uh, we can't, there's any usual stipulations.
Other discussion, comments? So, does anyone know what we're voting on? Uh, is it clear from the Chair's presentation? I'm gonna try a voice vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next, Mr. President, is motion to approve project number eight, Lower Atkinson Master Plan, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Um, the, the committee met on this on the second. We did have Parks Director, uh, Lisa Reed, uh, join us to kind of discuss a little bit. And what we learned in that process was that this funding, uh, was essentially, um, designed to extend, as you probably know, the Lower Street, uh, um, Lower Atkinson Master Plan, and in the discussion of much debate, it has been completed, and this was apparently sort of an add-on to that. And the primary focus of the three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars would be to, uh, discuss the relocation, potentially your changing of the clubhouse that exists at Pioneer League. Um, in continued discussion, we did find that potentially the price of this new clubhouse, which potentially included some kind of conference room, was somewhere around three million dollars. And, um, there, there was, uh, uh, so that, that was, that was something we discussed. We discussed about whether the current plan is really considered interim or final. We also discussed, and the Ward Four Counselor joined us, uh, with Lower Atkinson and Pioneer, also being Ward Four, about the desires potentially of the Pioneer League itself. Uh, there was also a question about whether adding a conference room contributed to some kind of, uh, change of use for the property. So I, I would say that to, to summarize the conversation, learning some of these things, the discussion in committee turned to, is this the direction we wanna go? And do we wanna fund this, putting ourselves potentially on this path? And, uh, in conclusion, the, the committee, um, uh, rejected that or recommended to approve zero to two, um, with one absent. So, uh, this was, uh, essentially turned down in committee, uh, but is brought to you for your consideration.
All right, Counselor Wallace.
Sure. Um, yeah, just in, in summary, I can't support funding this mainly because our master plan changed and we're not moving the clubhouse. So the, the funding request was for architectural plans for a different clubhouse, but, you know, we had extensive meetings, onsite, design meetings, the Pioneer League, community action, Parks Department, Parks Commission, engineering, and we all kind of came to an agreement on what we could reasonably do there for a reasonable price. And the Pioneer League, and I confirmed it with them, so I said, no, we, we're not moving the clubhouse. That was our understanding as well. And, um, so I think it's a little bit outdated, and also the, the comment too, but they, they did have a conference room proposed in there, which I strongly am against because it was more, that was being pushed by the Parks Department, Pioneer League, so we don't need that. But the real reason is, we don't need to move the clubhouse. It's too expensive. It actually may not even fit because we're gonna move the playground to the center. So I think it's just, um, it's outdated. And actually, I believe the Parks Commission voted on an amended master plan as well. So Parks Commission is on the same page with the rest of us, so I just think it's, it's an obsolete request at this point. Thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve. I came out of committee one to two, against. Any others, is that right? Zero. Any other, uh, counselor who's to speak on the side of, roll call.
So roll call on number eight. Counselor Vogel, now, Counselor Wallace.
No.
Counselor Z. Counselor Connel.
No.
Counselor Devlin. Counselor Con.
No.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCollum.
No.
Counselor Shan.
No.
Counselor Tonto.
No.
Counselor Ogden.
No.
Number eleven.
Mr. President, may I, um, offer the committee report on projects nine and ten together? Separately or together, at your discretion. So, project number nine is Bartlett Mall Frog Pond Improvement. The amount is one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And project number ten is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars relative to the fountain. So on project number nine, um, we did have Parks Director, Lisa Reed, we did have Parks Commission Chair, Kim Turner, join us, um, both of whom were knowledgeable and spoke on this. So project nine is really all about the water quality in the Bartlett Mall, which, as we know, has been problematic. Um, there are four specific items that are called out to be funded by this. So one is a bathometric survey. Um, there's not one yet identified solution to solve the Bartlett Mall water quality, but one of them potentially, you know, is a dredge, uh, or, or removing material from there. And one of the sort of fact-finding or information-finding efforts, it would be a bathometric survey. So part of this hundred and eighty-six would go to that point, go to that, uh, purpose. The second one, um, would be to, to dig two shallow wells. So obviously, one of the problems is trying to introduce fresh water into this Bartlett Mall. And one of the concepts is that if wells were, were drilled into the ground, water could be brought up, potentially aerated, and that would help, uh, move the water, but also, again, introduce fresh water in, uh, helping improve the water quality. Um, the, the fourth one I'll skip to is additional design and engineering work. So that, just mention that at order because, again, there hasn't been a solution that's been determined. Like, this is the, this, this is the direction we're gonna go and we're gonna solve it. Counselor Connel, uh, at large, joined us, and we could discuss some various potential options, each of which, of course, has pros and cons, from its effectiveness to its cost, to its durability as a solution. And then the final one, which I think we also talked a little about, was the acquisition of granite stones. So the idea here was, um, placing the granite stones, uh, essentially around the perimeter of the pond, which has been very difficult to define. But I, I do wanna say that, and it says it right here, that ConCon has not yet signed off on that, so it's unknown if they will ultimately accept that. Uh, the way the application's written and the way it was described is if, if they don't accept it, that they will find other uses for the granite stone in the park. Um, so that's a question mark. However, uh, the Parks Chair did state that, um, they have had conversations with the Conservation Administrator, so it's, it's not completely without any sort of context. So to lead project nine, I'll just leave you with this. This is, I would say, an initial effort in this endeavor. It is not gonna solve, we, we would almost certainly see additional monies, potentially big money, depending which direction we decided to go. But I don't want anybody to feel that, you know, this was presented as, oh, a hundred and eighty-six, and the water falling, and that will be perfect. The second one is project number ten, and that's specific to the fountain. What we learned in committee on this is that really, uh, the fountain is secondary to the water quality. Uh, the, the fountain itself, while it, it did at one point have the ability to move water, is not sufficient on its own to improve the water quality. And the reason it's secondary is because we don't wanna repair the fountain and then have it get ruined again by poor water qualities. There's sort of an order of operations there, um, to be considered. This is a hundred and twenty-six thousand. We heard the mayor talk a little bit about it, um, during her, the mayor's update. Um, so it, it's a question mark. I will say that, uh, one thing that raised some concern, I would say, in committee was potentially removing the fountain and having it restored off-site, but not on any specific timeline as far as when it might come back. It was mentioned that, you know, it could go, could leave and then, and then be repaired, but be stored somewhere on private property until it was ready. I, I, I will take responsibility. I, I had some heartburn from that, so we, we did make an amendment, and that was just that, you know, the fountain be returned, um, as soon as practi- practicable to the park, even if it can't go back into the pond. It should at least get back to the property so that it doesn't get lost somewhere on private property, uh, which was brought up during committee. So that amendment was accepted in committee two to zero, and the recommendation, uh, for both of these, uh, comes to you for two to zero. And I, I forgot one last thing, which is we did discuss the balance of the funds between nine or ten, like, should we have taken more from ten and put it towards nine, you know, in terms of, because essentially, it was, again, as stated, nine is not sufficient to solve the problem. But the general feeling of the applicants was, they, they felt com- comfortable with the breakdown here, and, um, you know, they could potentially return back for amendment or something if they felt like they got somewhere on the water quality and wanted to suck some money from ten into nine. But they were comfortable with this as it was applied for. So I think the committee accepted that as from the applicants, and that's why it was, uh, provided to you two to zero in favor on both. I defer to you, Mr. Chair, if you, Mr. President, if you wanna vote on each separately. I defer to you, Mr. Chair. If you, Mr. President, if you want to vote on each separately, we did in committee.
I'm going to try and take it together. All those, anyone any further? Go ahead.
I didn't catch a second off first.
Second.
I was the first, sorry. We're the second on both collectively. Any other Counselor speak? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, Mr. President. On number 11, just an update that that is not coming out tonight. That's the knock tennis court. So we'll talk more about that in committee and we'll bring it to you when it's ready. Project number 12, motion to approve. This is, sorry.
Yes.
No, I appreciate that. This is project number 12, thirty-three thousand dollars, Park Lighting Improvements. So, you know, the application tells you what Apple Park is, presumably you know that. But this is essentially to install four light posts. It has gone through the Parks Commission, and they've approved this. The city's electrical inspector has also been contacted and talked about the location of the connections. Here's where the controversy is. The, this was, comes to you with a one-to-one vote in approval. The Ward Five Counselor brings up the recent so-called Norwell decision, which I know was circulated during, I believe, our last CPC round. But they continue, it continues to be the basis for, I think, a little bit of an evolution about what is technically permissible out of CPA funds. Just as a brief reminder, you know, in the town of Norwell, they wanted to build the multi-use pack essentially, and a 10-payer tax seat was brought forward. The 10 taxpayers ultimately did prevail, so the town had to sort of pay twice to wants to do it, and then they had to reimburse the CPA account. But this primarily came up during our Fuller Field discussions, where there was a question about whether stadiums are permitted at that time and get here a little bit from the city solicitor. So I want to acknowledge that that concern did come up and basically lighting, you know, this comes in under, you know, under the recreation category. But the Ward Five Counselor did not feel that this is actually a permissible expenditure of CPA funds, and that's the one-to-one vote, one absent. So that is Apple Park. Again, it is thirty-three thousand dollars.
Any further, Counselor Collins?
Yeah, I just want to elaborate. Thank you. CPC says that structures or recreation aren't really allowed on the property. The only structure there allows a bathroom. So we stretch the definition of stadium and state, which are clearly not allowed. Light poles and other things actually make the area not natural, right? So the idea of spending money on open space and recreation funds is to make the area more natural than it was before. Installing lighting here makes it not natural along the way. It would be frowned upon with a strict reading of CPA rules, regulations to the decision that was made. I think it's a worthy cause. I think it should come from a different fund. I just don't think it should come from CPA because we already are treading in line.
Counselor, other Counselors? Counselor Connell.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm wondering, I did see Mike just set aside, but have we, I guess the question is, have we funded projects like this before with CPC funds with lighting projects? I know HAC was discussed, and I think it had to do with archival and trying to protect archives, like maybe it's the library or something. But I'm just wondering if there's any precedent of anything with lighting projects in the past that may be.
Sure. Somebody could please see if Mr. President said it still here. You can ask him if he recalls anything on this topic. He's not here. Wow. He's at Man United.
Wow, good for you.
Mr. President said, you could answer a question. I think you've been with our CPC since the outset. So on your experience, what precedent is there for us to use CPA funding for lighting? In this case, it's an athletic field, right, correct?
Park, that was our. It's a park. It's lighting, it's on the pathways and the bench areas in the park. Do you not believe that there has been a specific funding for lighting as such in our history? However, the sense of committee was this, rather than focusing on the small lighting areas as structures, that its purpose was to expand the recreational, potential recreational use of the existing park. That is, is a logical.
Thank you. To answer your question, Counselor.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, any other Counselor? Okay, on the motion to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Then the one.
All right, Mr. President. Motion to approve collectively, number thirteen, stadium bond, number fourteen, Cherry Hill Bond Payment, and number fifteen, administrative costs. So thirteen and fourteen are both bond payments. You know, we continue to pay these down as they, as they, as they are stated there. One is for the World War Memorial Stadium, and the other one is for Cherry Hill. And then fifteen is sort of the standard administrative cost, just as a brief reminder. Probably the biggest part of that is a portion of salary for a member of the Office of Planning and Development who essentially liaises with the CPC and helps them with their work, and then membership dues and so forth. So I should have stated the amounts, but it's one hundred and twenty-seven eighty dollars for the World War Memorial Stadium. It is eleven nine forty for the Cherry Hill Bond Payment, and twelve thousand dollars for the administrative. We did these collectively in committee two, and they were two to zero.
Any other Counselor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, Mr. President. That's it for CPC tonight. So projects number one and number 11 remaining in committee to be continued. Motion to approve order two seventy-four, eight thirty twenty-one, loan order for police cruisers. Thank you. So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, long story short is that this is, okay, so let me, let me explain to you what's happening and then why we're doing this order. So the police department typically budgets in their budget to purchase new cruisers on a regular basis. We did see that this year in our budget. But they typically do things like a lease to own or something where they want to do, you know, three years. And so in the past, we used to basically just approve it in the budget and move forward. Recently, DOR, the Department of Revenue, has issued new guidance on how to process these, and they essentially want to treat a lease like a perk, like a borrowing. And the reason is because naturally, when you take on a three-year lease, you are essentially binding the city for three years. So previously, we would just take one vote, whereas for a bond or anything that was expected to extend, we would take another vote just to ensure that, you know, we were essentially binding future councils to fund this. Because as you can imagine, if you fund your first year at least payments and you fall off the wagon, and the second one, they're going to repo the vehicle. So in a sense, this is, you know, something that is basically showing our commitment to this lease to own for three years. It's not really an expenditure of new funds because we've already budgeted it, but it will sort of bind both the council and administration in the future, two years, to fund those amount. And ninety-seven five does include the cost to buy equipment and to outfit the vehicles. The only thing it doesn't include are like specifically the financing cost, interest cost, which is typical of how we write bond orders. We, we say, we're going to build this project at five million, not five million plus the interest over thirty years. So you should expect to see this again. We sometimes do this with EPS, with purchasing dump trucks or whatever. We typically do this with police cars as well. So this will become a new, regular and fun tradition. Three to zero, three to zero, you know, two to zero, two to zero.
Other Counselors? The loan order, any roll call?
Order two seventy-four, Counsel Vogel, yes. Counsel Wallace.
Yes.
Counsel Z, yes. Counsel Connell.
Yes.
Counsel Dedwin.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel Lane, yes. Counsel McCollough.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yeah.
Counsel Tanta.
Yes.
Counsel Largen.
Yes.
That's it for budget, Mr. President. Thank you. Chair Connell, education?
Yes, thank you, Counsel President. The Education Committee met last week on September eighth. And we had a conversation with the superintendent in terms of meeting a lot of the new administration staff for the school. There's been a lot of new positions, some new faces, some previously seen faces. And talked a little bit about maybe two specific areas that I want to touch on right now. One is in regard to the strategic plan, the five-year strategic plan update. I believe the mayor mentioned it in one of our meetings, maybe a month, maybe this earlier this month, on in terms of the retreat, that the school committee coming up with a new method of kind of garnering input for the strategic plan. And that really consisted of these focus groups. And the first one was done with the school committee during their retreat, and it was very successful. And it was somewhat facilitated by school administrators, mainly educators. And so the next proposal was that the city council as a whole meet with the same team of educators, as well as the superintendent, on the seven kind of principal points of the strategic plan, which we will be getting a presentation prior to this meeting that the city council will be doing. And I did send a doodle poll to all the Counselors here that if you could please fill that out. Ideally, it'd be great to get all city Counselors there. This is our opportunity to get into the actual shaping before they sit down and work on the specific aspects of the strategic plan. So this is like some free input. And one of the things that I think is really critical to note in this effort is that, that the educators are going to actually be involved in the process. And that was not something that was previously done. There was a lot of community groups formed, but really, at the end of the day, a lot of the educators felt like they saw the results after the fact, and they actually want to be a little bit part of the process. So this will become a first-time endeavor. The main thing is, when we do meet, I'm hoping, talking with the Counsel President, that it will be all, if all of us are together, to post it as a public meeting and a public to attend as well. The other thing we talked about was in terms of how the school's reopening. They talked about the test and stay program that's being done for kids that are getting ill symptoms while they're at school. And funding, a lot of funding's been provided to do the rapid tests for COVID. And if the kids are tested positive, they're sent home. If they're not, they actually get to go back to the classroom. So that was something, you know, just in terms of how the school reopening has been, with masks and outdoor being unmasked, that they went through a little bit of that process. Folks have any other questions? I will be posting, recording the meeting and the minutes as well, and I hope you can respond to the doodle polls so we can set up a good time for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Next is general government. There are only two items. I'm going to ask Counselor Connell to present them on my behalf so I can say it here. The first is just to receive and file Counselor Connell. And the second is the Donatry Lick nomination. Would you vote for that? Motion to receive. Yeah, so first.
Let's swap seats.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't recall voting.
That's okay. That's all right.
That's right. Yes, so we did meet last week. Counsel Dedwin had a conflict with work, so he could not attend. But the ex-officio member, the mayor was there, Counsel Connell and I were there. We did start the debate on the resolution by Counselor Shan proposed resolution as to Indigenous Peoples' Day and Pum's Day. We could not agree whether to come out with that, so we kept it in. I will post another meeting. Counselor Shan wasn't involved. But I do intend to bring it to the fore on the 27th at our next meeting. So we'll work on that. So far, I made a proposal that we do Indigenous Peoples' Day as they did in New York City, together with Italian Heritage Day. I won't get you into all the nuances, but that's just where things stood. We will resume the debate soon. Though obviously didn't happen in any. Motion to receive and file Communication three thirty-one.
Seven.
Mr. President, this is mooted now. This was sort of a first pass at a grand master fee schedule that came out of our comprehensive every ten-year ordinance review committee. And it's since been superseded by an actual ordinance. So we can just, we can just file it.
Further discussion? Very done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Motion to approve appointment two sixty-three, Donatry Lick, H. Abrik, Street, Full and Mass, Human Resources Director.
Second. Second.
Mr. President, we did have the mayor, obviously, as an ex-officio member, was most intimately involved in this proposed nomination because she made it. We did have testimony from, Counsel from Ward Five questioning the process in the sense that it's more typical, the assertion was, to advertise and hire from outside. What we heard is that there were proper procedures followed. But then on balance, the administration felt that Ms. Draylik, who's been acting as Human Resources Director de facto for months now, would be the right person. She is currently the assistant. The previous Human Resources Director went on leave for quite some time. The mayor described some difficulties in working with the previous director and pointed out that that actually was fully advertised, that went out to the world, and the previous candidate had a very good resume, and yet it didn't work out at all. So we did vote two to nothing, Counsel Connell and I, to recommend approval. Thank you.
I believe it was fair to say, my first words in the house, that there was a discussion of the philosophy of either killing someone dead or bringing people up the outside. I guess responsible consideration. Further discussion? Counsel. Counsel McCollough, you're first.
Yeah, I am still going to vote no on this, and I've been encouraging folks. You know, human resources is an entity that builds programs and processes that ensure fairness for everyone. It promotes development of the individual, et cetera. And it's incumbent upon us to follow those processes and procedures. We can't get an equitable candidate if we don't post it and don't actively look for it. So, you know, I did hear the testimony. I was on Zoom. I didn't think it was appropriate to have a debate there. But what I, what I came away with is we had one preferred candidate. We chose not to post it because there is no copy of the posting that was there. The selection committee was department heads who had worked with the applicant before. The contract that was given and the job was awarded has a term. So the compensation, but doesn't enumerate the job description and job responsibilities as every other contract that we've looked at over the last year. And I must say, I want to remind everyone that we've looked at the chief, we've looked at the marshals, we've looked at everyone else's, and they have enumerated job responsibilities in their contract. It alludes here in this contract that says it'll comply with the job description. But when you search the ordinances and you find human resources, the job description has been removed. So there is no job description. So we have a contract with term and compensation with no enumeration of duties and responsibilities. I think that's problematic. What I've seen here, I would at best say is that the process took some shortcuts. And I think for the fairness to the applicant and the fairness to the city and taxpayers, that we should vote no on this and have the process reset. I will state that in fifty days, we're going to have an election. And I think that we'll have a mayor-elect, and I think the mayor-elect should have input into who the next HR director should be over the next three years. I think we're that close in the window. So for those two reasons, I'd ask my peers to vote no on this and reset this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question was just, in committee, did experienced negotiating collective bargaining agreements come up at all with the? No, it did not come up. Also, I should point out that the Counselor who just spoke alluded to the election. We can discuss that either, to be honest.
Further discussion? Counsel Wallace.
I just have a question for anybody who can answer. Are there certain laws for posting through these public positions? Even if there is somebody who wants to promote from within, which happens, are there, I don't know, some sort of public laws where you have to post so you can interview? That would be my question.
Fair question. Fair question. What can you put a spark on that, or are you going to defer to Councillor Connell? Thank you, God.
I'm trying to be consistent with our precedent and process. Our union contracts are required that jobs be posted. Our union contracts require that we don't do rate skips, rate level skips. That this will be, our union contracts that are in our city don't allow excessive increases in compensation. Again, it has nothing to do with the applicant, has to do with the process more than anything else. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, I don't know. Would have been my answer also, certainly all the key contracts, all the other contracts require posting. The Human Resources has never been a member of the union because of the collective bargaining that that position is part of. Such as several, finance director is, nor is the city clerk, and those jobs are probably not posted. The archeons.
For informational purposes, are individual personal contracts governed by the same set of rules or laws as collective bargaining?
Mr. President. Our finance director, but I frankly am embarrassed to say I don't know whether this position is part of the departmental head union. All right. Regardless, I'd like to make a motion to continue to adjourn certain September council.
Second. Has there been a previous motion on the floor?
There was.
There was. There was motion to.
Second, I'd like to receive. Discussion of the motion.
I'd like to bend a friendly motion to continue this to the first meeting after the November election.
Well, I'm not going to accept that just because I don't know. I mean, again, the reason why I want the continuance is that I'm embarrassed that I didn't air out all of the issues that you raised tonight. I don't quite know whether I would make the recommendation to make it go after the election. But please understand it procedurally that if it does come out in two weeks, you can make another motion to continue. So your hands are not tied.
Councillor Devlin, ready? Raise your hand or just.
No. Boy, I wish you'd all got your votes.
Are you discussing the motion? Continue. Very done. I'll take a roll call.
Motion to give to a date certain, Councillor Vogan. Yes. Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
No?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that's Z.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes. Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCollum.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tonta.
Yes.
Councillor Arden.
Yes, that's all I have for tonight.
The Councillor Connell and I are in a brief exercise.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, next is Chair Devlin. Please, this is important.
Something to report. We do have a meeting of the committee on Wednesday at 6:00 PM to discuss the new and improved short-term rental.
Orbits. Got that?
And it's hybrid.
All right, and it's hybrid. Neighborhood and City Services Chair Connell.
Nothing to report tonight, although the committee's meeting tomorrow night. And we're going to try to clear the docket, at least take a good look at it.
Okay, so for members of the public, the docket's actually quite long, so please pay attention to that. Planning and Development Chair Shan.
All right, motion to approve, number 269.
Seven.
So this is appointment for Elizabeth Delisle to be reappointed to the planning board. This will be her first full appointment. She took over from somebody else in the last time. Chair Soncog spoke highly of Miss Delisle. She has been a huge help with planning board. She stepped up and she's the secretary of the board as stands right now. Elizabeth was extremely excited to, wanting to continue supporting the planning board and being part of the community effort here. So the committee voted three to zero to approve for a reappointment to the planning.
Other comments?
Councillor Connell, I just have a question to the Chair, excuse me, to the Chair of the Chair Committee. We're in a situation where both of these appointments go through 26, right? We have a mayor coming in, and this will go right through there. Was there any discussion about possibly shortening that term so that either the people being dominated here and/or the new mayor could opt out of whatever they'd like to do?
So, no, there wasn't a discussion about that. But what I can say is people, if they do want to opt out, they typically do, which is how Miss Delisle got her position in the first place as a backup appointment. So, and, you know, there was a discussion of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other councillors? Okay, roll call on this appointment.
Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCollum.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
And Councillor Tonta.
Yes.
And Councillor Arden.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve appointment 270, Heather Rogers from the planning board.
Good afternoon.
All right, so Ms. Rogers is a new person to new recourse, has been here for a few years. And Chair Soncog spoke highly and excited to have her wanting to join, and she is a commercial realtor in town. And this will be the first time in 10 years that we've had a realtor on the planning board. So Chair Soncog was pleased to have her, and Heather was happy to start wanting to volunteer the community. So that being said, at that point in time, we're down to two. So we voted two to zero to approve Ms. Rogers to the planning board.
Other councillors? They've not roll called. Oh, councillor Z.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. Are there concerns about having to accuse very regularly? As, you know, just something that came up in this.
Yes, that can come up for discussion, and she did talk about that with Chair Soncog. And what she does is not typically what they deal with at planning board. She deals with the developer after a project's been determined. So she would not feel the need to or would not need to accuse herself of some of these planning workings or decisions. It was a topic of conversation there.
Other councillors?
Okay, roll call. Number 270, Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCollum.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tonta.
Yes.
Councillor Arden.
Yes.
All right, motion to approve, point at 271, Ryan Raich to the Global Housing Trust.
Seven.
All right, Mr. Raich is also a realtor in town. He's also had extensive work doing affordable housing in other municipalities. Susan Cameron, who is only a four thousand trust, spoke of their approval of having him appointed. And he was very excited to be volunteering with the trust. So at that point, we voted three to zero to approve Mr. Raich to the Global Housing Trust.
Councillors? Roll call.
Number 271, Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Dallas. Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCollum.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tonta.
Yes.
Councillor Arden.
Yes, thank you.
All right, motion to approve, order 273, PR acceptance for 3.2 Merrimack Street.
Second.
All right, so at this point, the committee had the opportunity to review the PR just like we all did in our package. We did not have the opportunity to hear from the applicant, but we did hear from Chair Soncog from the planning board as this particular property has been for the planning board for some segments in the past. Chair Soncog was excited to have residents in the community wanting to have the PR on their home. And she actually volunteered to hold our council board for to see if she could actually continue getting support PRs. And so at that point, we have voted three to zero to approve acceptance of this PR, Mr. Connell.
Other councillors? Do a roll call, Mrs. Crawford.
On order 273, Councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCollum.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tonta.
Yes.
Councillor Arden.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
These are white orders.
Yes, so let's see how this one goes. So motion to approve Communications 351 and 352 to late files.
Second.
So that being said, as everyone heard tomorrow, residents denied Communication 338, which is blighted state and high, the abandoned global oil service station. We discussed amongst ourselves and at a prior meeting what could be done. And councillor, the council president took it upon himself to go through and pull these two documents together that we have tonight. Basically going into master or law, chapter 139, section one, which gives the city council the legal authority to actually call in a resident or company or whatever for a blighted building. So the first communication you have is Communication 351, which is a letter to the residents, to the global companies, asking them to come in at a specific time for a hearing for the planning, for the city council. The second communication is specific to making sure that this property could be torn down. Citizens blighted after the fact, after the public hearing. So this is part of what's allowed by master or law. And we voted three to zero to bring it before the city council here. Make a decision whether we want to bring in global for a public hearing. And I will turn it over to councillor.
I just want to elaborate on one thing. So I didn't actually write these documents. I contacted KP Law, the city solicitor. They were drafted by Jonathan Ickman. So these are instruments prepared by the city solicitor, also clarified. I think the Chair asked to approve both. The second one is only asked to form because you can't approve it until we have the hearing. Question before the council is whether you wish to summon the owner for a public hearing. Councillor Z.
Well, the first question is a point of order. So 351 is still new to us though. So are you proposing an emergency preamble to act on it tonight? I understand you've dealt with it in committee, but the rest of us didn't see it, so. And the second question I have is, I'm glad you mentioned 352 because I can't, and we have to at least give them a chance to respond, right? So the second question is, my understanding in previous mayor's updates is that somebody was going to contact them. Have those efforts failed?
Well, we're basically. More of an information we can bring up for the director in a second, but I'm going to say it's fine, failed. Sure, just, well, I can always speak for the conversations I've had with the mayor. So the mayor reset the global. We had a conversation with them to talk about both short-term issues and long-term issues. The long-term issue, obviously, the end result is to get long-term redevelopment that's a residential, not a traffic generation, commercial use. We had discussions with them about the fact that there's a deep restriction that is contrary to essentially what would be desirable on the city side. Totally, they were needing to change that, so they're efforting that on their end. There was also some discussion about short-term improvements. It didn't involve moving the building per se, but there was discussion of removal of the signage, cleaning up the vegetation, blocking the entrance on High Street, and removal of some of the other miscellaneous equipment related to the gas station that could be taken in a short order. There were a couple other, you know, things discussed there, but some of the butter complaints that were raised in the communication to council, all those things were discussed, and they agreed to. Thanks for that, because on those ends.
Councillor Shan.
So just to reiterate, the concern that was brought up mainly by the residents was timeliness because we definitely don't want to be stuck in this situation. We're waiting 20 years for this to be taken care of, which is why we did want to use chapter 139 to bring the global services, global oil into city council for a certain.
But now, if I could just clarify in my mind, so these are the two items that came in as late files, right? Communications, and they were referred to planning and development. And now on the committee report, I'm discussing them.
Right, so maybe we do need an emergency to allow these to be discussed.
I know it's been worked for.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion, because I have a personal question, so particularly not of America's, but. It came into us to communicate, the item came into us to communicate from a committee. And we had two meetings on it, and then I asked the city solicitor to prepare these orders. I might create the charter issue, and I also, but most of all, I don't want councillors to be uncomfortable. The step that we would take tonight, if we're in an emergency preamble, we wanted to do that, is simply to authorize the city solicitor to send a notice to set the public hearings. If councillors are ready to do that tonight, then we should not do the emergency preamble. But yeah, that's the only action. You're not prejudging whether you're ordering anything. You're just whether you're going to send them a notice and bring them in. But if you're not ready to do that, then we should not do the emergency preamble. We should wait.
Just point of order. I mean, my first suggestion is to make a motion to waive the rules. We need to talk about this, just because this is a property and who knows where this goes. I don't even know how we're talking about this. It did go into committee. So I would say, I don't even know, maybe the clerk can assist me with which rule I need to waive in order for us to discuss, to even talk about it. And then, once it's on the floor, then I suppose we can.
Well, I opposed one of that. I don't think it's out of order. I mean, because again, it was referred, the matter was nuisance. An allegation of NGL, chapter 139, would pay an application. So it was before the committee, and we did debate it and we had advice from KP Law. I do agree that because it didn't come into the council as an order, and the charter says you can't vote on the order the same night it comes in. I think the safer course is a emergency preamble. I don't think it's out of order for us to discuss it during a committee report. But it would be out of order for us to vote on it unless we waive our rules, which we argued it for in the packet, and do a two-thirds supermajority emergency preamble.
Yeah, I would add, Mr. President, that it is related to, but not part of Communication 338, which is also in the meeting.
No, it's not out of order for us to talk about it, but that doesn't mean. Hold on. But, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I guess if I may direct the chair to, direct a question to the director. What kind of, what's happening? Do we have a timeline? Do we, have we heard from them? Are they getting back to us? But fill in all that.
They've done some small improvements. They have assigned, by all, the canopy equipment that's above the gas. They did put the droopy barriers, as probably see near High Street. They were doing some vegetation trimming, I guess. I suggested they talk directly to the butters before doing any of that work. Just to make sure that we agree with us when it was being done. But, so they have made some improvements on those smaller ends of the deed. We expected that to take a while on their end, probably, because they have to go through their legal department and so forth. But they did say that they understood the concern on our end, that it would not be viable for commercial use, which is what the deed put a while on their end.
Roll call, councillor.
Thank you. So who's handling it? Is it you? Is it the mayor?
The mayor had originally reached out to global. Jennifer and I have been in some communication with them about some of the issues. But of course, some of this is in the realm of zoning, some of this is a rebel brother, the ones you're discussing.
What do you anticipate is next with them? I mean, do you expect?
Yeah, I assume that you're having a hearing, you'll attend that. But the long-term solution, I think, is what we're all looking for, but that's going to take a bit longer. Just because of uses, knowledge, or grandfather protected, doesn't mean that you can force them directly to redevelop that property. So we have other ways to leverage that, of course, but what we really want is something that zoning can allow. That's what I was looking for.
Thank you. Councillor McCollum and Councillor Tonta.
Thank you, Councillor Tonta, President. The way I'm interpreting this is that your recommendation from Communication 338 is these two actions, right? And so my question is, should they have come in as an order? Or should they have just come in as a recommendation? I don't know what the right process would be. But that's how I'm viewing them, that this is your recommendation from committee, that this is, 351 is, I think, the one we should focus on because that will start the rest of the other things.
Councillor Tonta.
I'm going to say pretty much the same thing, except, you know, 351, Communication 351 needs to be filled out as a specific information as to date to the hearing and that sort of thing. We're going to do that tonight. Are we going to refer to the administration to fill that in?
No, I said, well, the city council has a pick-a-date. So, I guess, that's kind of a chicken and egg thing. You know, we have to start talking about a pick-a-date. But maybe, maybe we should talk about a date in the future. Maybe that's the way to go and then bring it back in two weeks. I don't know.
I would recommend we just keep them both in committee, give votes of赞成.
But, but again, I do, it was deliberate part of the committee that we wanted to put this before the full council quickly. So, we don't have a situation like Councillor Z, well, sorry, councillor Connors has spoken.
Yeah, thank you, council president. I think we should waive the rules. Let's discuss, let's set the date and the poll. That's what my proposal would be. But I defer to the chair. If you'd like to make that motion.
So, one question first. So, the hearing is to determine if it is a nuisance. I understand they may come and defend themselves. Who makes the affirmative case? Who, who's going to stand up and tell me why it's a nuisance legally? I just, I don't, I, I understand the neighbors, but I need a legal, I need something to hang on to. What is the definition of nuisance? Why is this a nuisance? Especially if we're setting a property on a path to destruction. I want, I want to make sure that I'm standing, I understand. So, normally, like, we're going to have a trial to figure out if it's nuisance. There's the person defending the property. Who's the other person telling you it's a nuisance legally? Is it the planning and development office, the zoning officer?
It doesn't say in statute. To answer your, your question, we do have a city solicitor.
So, that, that's my point, is that I'm, I'm fine if, if, if this is not to, to state that it's a nuisance, but it's the determinant of nuisance. I have no problem sending that in motion. But I, I think that we better, somebody has to stand up and explain to me why it is a nuisance legally. Not, not that it's annoying to live next to or unsafe, which I completely understand. So, were you thinking the twenty-seventh? Was that the intent here?
No, no, I was thinking every seventh day. But if you don't want to vote tonight.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to waive the rules so we can discuss it. And I, I know, I don't know if the president agrees. We need that option. And the second one would be a motion for an emergency. The preamble is that we've been made aware that this is potentially a nuisance. And we need to investigate that as quickly as possible in the, in the interest of public safety. And then third is to set a date of, do you want to do the second meeting in October, the first meeting? Pending, you know, because we're going to send this to the, to the other person. I think we really have to be fairly certain that we bear that about. I think at least At seven?
Seven thirty or?
Seven, seven thirty. If you want to do it on its own, at like seven, like we would do a poll here. All right.
I will second all three of those.
Seven, seven as a public hearing.
And the date is October twelve, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, councillor Tom.
I just pointed Tom, I drink later. I know most of us shoot down and walk at the same time, but is it permissible for us to make three motions at one time?
Sure. The risk is always that they fail. You could make a motion to divide the question.
Yes.
Do you want to do that?
All right, Sir Jones.
So, we had councillor Z and councillor Dublin. Thank you. Roll call, Mr. President.
So, make sure we're voting. We're, we're waiting a rule which requires us to not act on things the same night they come in.
True, true. And, and emergency preamble.
Emergency preamble.
Reason being.
And then, and then to authorize the city solicitor to send a notice for seven p.m. on October twelfth. That's a notice of a hearing. We're not pre-determining whether there's nuisance. We're just getting the notice here. Okay, roll call.
On the emphasis, councillor Vogel.
Oh, I guess so.
Councillor Wallace.
Yes.
Councillor Z.
Yes.
Councillor Conn.
Yes.
Councillor Dublin.
Yeah.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor Lane.
Yes.
Councillor McCall.
Yes.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tom Carter. And councillor Rock.
Yes, thank you very much. Is there anything else, Chair, or Chair?
Yes, just to remind
Point of order. I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules and go pass the button.
Okay, any discussion? I'm also prepared to say aye.
Yes, I would like to remind folks, we're in joint hearing, Wednesday night, planning board on the Windferments. The seven o'clock pre-chares is a meeting. And we'll also be discussing the parking permits zoning as well. And then to reiterate with my fellow councillor at March, next Thursday, we will have a planning and development committee meeting, bringing up short-term rental units that I did send to everybody, the new amendments that are available. So.
Thank you very much. I'm the fellow safety chair.
Thank you, councillor. Just a reminder, we're going to take six, it's not coming out tonight. Application forty-nine, motion to approve. Our site half marathon and five K, applicant can in, everything is in, in order. Had some good discussion. Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those are fair.
Ordinance ninety-three, restricting residential permits on campers. This is an item that came in and we had some discussion. The language reads, if you're following along, page one fourteen. No residential parking permit shall be issued to a camper, including without limitation, a truck with a camper bed. We have amended that. I think we had a clerical error between clerk and I, I had a technology explosion today, so I'll see that. We, our amended sentence was an exception would be if that truck is a primary mode of transport and no off-street parking available. And that recommendation came out three to zero for the council to debate.
Other councillors. My just a second question, because I'm a sponsor and this is also more to. So, first, I want to hear from councillor Jones. But it sounds fine. What do you think about primary? Is there only vehicle?
Yes.
Only vehicle. Can we just say only vehicle? Because I, 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 that's what we mean. I don't want to argue with a
I can make that as a friendly amendment or?
Councillor Vogel was the sponsor.
Yeah, that was, that was, thank you. That was my idea. I'm thinking, I'm thinking of somebody who's, you know, happens there. So, there's a lot of contractors that have a camper shell. And they, and that's their, you know, maybe they're a two-car family and that's their primary vehicle. And I just, I just don't want to, I, I think that I understand your point about why you don't want a camper on the street, that there are primary vehicles that have campers on it.
Councillor Jones.
I, I certainly like the word only better than primary. We were talking about insurance, how that would be very difficult. And no off-street parking, that helps. It probably won't affect many vehicles because of those conditions.
Okay, so it's a friendly amendment, right? So, so we're okay with only vehicle and I want to make sure what the motion is on the load.
Thank you. Just a little bit of clarity. So, what if it is a two-car family? One is a sedan. One is a, essentially a work truck that has a camper shell on it. It's not necessarily a camper shell where you stand up and are able to go in and has a sink and all that, but it just has a, a work camper shell on it.
Jones, I do, I do hear the distinction, it's my terminology, right?
Yeah, yeah. In that case, it would not be the only.
That's right.
And that would be eligible. And the councillors, councillors feel eligible to say it's not, it's a trans person. A camper shell.
No, they're not.
Is it a camper shell?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you mean by camper shell.
Well, there are, there, those are shells, but not camper. So, so define a camper. Campers that got a back door on it, you walk up into it and it's got a sink and a bed, right? That's a camper. Maybe goes over the cab.
Certainly can live in it, but you don't live in a shell.
No, you don't. But I just, is there a distinction? Do we know what a camper is?
Can I be defined or? We have to go back.
Yeah. Usually work trucks, they're caps or covers, they're not camper inserts. So, I think we're okay with camper, right? And I don't think we have to define that. As you said, primary, two-car family. They'd have two drivers. One would be driving a sedan, another one would be driving this camper-like vehicle, right? And so, that would be his or her primary vehicle along the way. When we say only, it says, you know, you can only have one car, that's it. So, I think primary, where we hash it out in the meeting, is probably better. But only, I think camper is clear versus cap of, of, you know, a truck cap or something.
You can always come back.
All right. So, what's the motion? Is it only or primary?
Only.
Only, I think.
All right, let's do a roll call.
And I tell you what, I understand it to be. So, it's no residential parking permit shall be issued to a camper, including without limitation in truck or the camper bed, provided no other. That shall be the only mode of transport and there shall be no off-street parking. Okay?
So, if it is the only and there is no off-street.
I would say no, no, no off-street parking. Shall be, shall be issued to a camper without limitation in truck or the camper bed, except in the case where it is the primary mode of transportation.
Guys, it's kind of late. Why don't we just push this? Motioning at twenty-seven, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Okay, communication three thirty-eight. High Street paving and work, strike. We did get these late files today, on the way. This is, this plan is an agreement between city engineer, our vendor tech, and the residents and the butters. What it does is it attempts to impact and slow traffic in from Carson Street down through Marlborough. It puts a median in the strip of varying size. It has, it was wider, it's been narrowed. The lines for bike lane have been moved. The crosswalk has been installed. There will be some reduction of parking, mostly on the south side, center, no, north side, on the north side, excuse me. And then, it's really, it was counted as eight spots, but it's really three spots. Because the five area, there are already no parking there de facto anyway, so painting this stuff. There will be two so signs placed. They're noted. The one on Marlborough Street kind of has an asterisk to it because it's Newbury and we've got to find a better spot for it. Right now, it's proposed across the street, but we'll, we'll get to find, it's going to be even, you know, fifty feet of that one that's on, on the corner of Marlborough. The big to be, I want to separate that from materials to be used. The committee focused on the design, focused on the safety aspect of things. So, we have bike paths, we have median, we have the crosswalk. And then down here in this corner, on the, by Bronfield Street, what you'll see on the south side, you'll see a segregated bike lane that has some striping along the way. The residents, again, in conjunction with city engineer, that will actually be a rumble strip. So, then it will, it will show cars when they come through that way, separating the bike lane from the roadway as well. Just an added layer of safety. It has some cost, I'll talk about those in a minute, but we wanted to focus on the design. So, from the butters standpoint, the resident standpoint, they're happy with this plan going forward. The debate that we, and, and so from a design standpoint, where our recommendation is three to zero. On a material standpoint, we wanted to give you two options and have the council make that decision based upon the budget that they wanted. The, we did have various components in that. Cobblestones versus stamped concrete. Cobblestones are about a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Concrete is about sixty thousand dollars. Thermal, thermal plastic paint is twelve thousand dollars. Oxen paint is fifty-six hundred dollars. And the rumble strip itself to do the cutting of the road was about forty nine hundred. The recommendation from the deputy DPS director was to go on the cobblestone, epoxy paint, rumble strips. Excuse me, was, excuse me. His recommendation was concrete, stamped concrete, similar to what's down at the rotary. Stamped concrete, epoxy paint, the rumble strip would be about seventy thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. He favors the epoxy paint over the thermal plastic. Thermal plastic was put by the high school. However, to put it downright, you actually have to take the top layer of asphalt off. And I know how we don't like to do that, with paint out. So, he's recommended epoxy to last a little, he feels it will last a little longer than, than, than thermal plastic. The option that the neighbors have been advocating for is cobblestones, epoxy paint and rumble strip, which was committed a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Councillor Z. Thank you. I think the chair covered it pretty well. I just, one side of the street anyways is my ward and the other is ward two. So, just want to say that it was, it was a good process overall and the iterative concept kind of works because the original design had much bigger median areas. And the neighbors and the two ward councillors, the chair of public safety, the city engineer, and then tech was kind of just operational, right? They were just implementing what was suggested. So, I think the iterative process worked. And the primary benefits are, one, heading out of the city, trying to keep cars from clipping off into the, into the side of road, which is, as most people know, when you're, you want to go faster, you want to take this inside of the curve, so people jumping into the bike lane and into the inside. So, by placing that rumble strip and better striping, trying to just alert drivers that they're going inside the corner. And then on the way into town, kind of the opposite problem, keeping people from coming inside the bend. So, you put the, the thing in the median there, the cobbles or the material of choice, trying to get them to stay out of there. So, anyways, it's been positive. The other things I want to mention are just a couple of things. One was, we did talk a lot about maintaining parking for March's Hill. So, this is one of those things that nobody will care about till the first snowfall and then everybody wants to go sledding. So, the design actually, when the medians got smaller, actually enabled us to maintain more of the spaces on the inside curve heading towards Newbury, which is a very popular parking space area for March's Hill. And I think, I won't speak for the ward two councillors, but both of us, I think, felt that even if you tried out while parking there, you probably run and find everybody's parked there anyway. So, trying to find a reasonable balance between the two. On the flip side, there are a couple of spaces that will be lost just by nature of the design itself. So, whereas right now you have kind of parking in the bike lane and then travel lane, you have to find physical space for that median. So, when that pushes everything in, the bike lane now is going to consume some areas that used to be parked. So, that's just by nature of the design. And then there are some no parking areas that I think are still, you know, the ward councils probably will still think about whether they really want to put those in or not based on the prevailing condition afterwards. It's hard to tell from the plan of, you know, tech always will tell you to take out all the parking, right? But I think generally there's agreement that we want to protect sightlines coming out of intersections. But some of the other parking, maybe it's a little more controversial. Ward councils can probably attest that taking away parking in front of people's homes is always touchy. So, I think that's something that will be looked at. The last thing is, you know, just to get the discussion finished on the materials. I think that, you know, I would make a motion that we, we recommend or we do cobbles. This whole project is fairly inexpensive altogether. It's like a hundred and fifty grand altogether, a hundred and fifteen, depending on which way you go. And that's what the residents would like to see and I'm bringing that forward for your consideration. That I think the best argument is consistency, really. That's what's down by the high school and it seems a little bit weird that we'd have what they have at the spot for rotary here. And then you go down a mile, not even, and you end up in the same street, it's High Street. And so, that's what the residents would like. I think in the end, both will offer the rumble characteristic. But this would be a little bit more historic, if you will, a little bit more
We have a motion and a second, but suppose, however, councillor Tom and councillor Lane.
Thank you, President. To you two, the chair. Can you define
Can you define rumble strip? Because, uh, some of them are widely spaced and really hazardous for cyclists and make it, you know, keep those skinny tires from shaking your feet out, you're in perpendicular.
It's gonna be cut, it's gonna be cut.
Just go like, like half.
Yeah, yeah.
Perpendicular, like the, like the policy.
Nothing, nothing like that.
Yeah.
An impediment to that.
Counselor Lane.
I'm, uh, opposed to cobblestone. I think it's actually a safety concern. Cause if people are gonna pass down and do the cobblestone, reach some other area, so. Also, I think the cost savings there and we just voted no on a few things that made no sense, but we're gonna spend the same amount of money on a stack. So I'm a no on cobblestone. I don't see, you know, if the DPS director saying, his recommendation, I'm gonna have to vote.
Hi, Counselor Wolf.
Thank you. I just added a little, little bit of color that the, uh, indeed the, uh, residents, that they do prefer the cobbles. And it does follow through as the council from work, one, um, said, follows through the rest of the street. Also, um, in terms of the parking, the, the, there was consensus among the area residents that losing those couple of spaces on that, uh, on the, the, the north side of the street was, they were okay with it, just to let you know that.
Other counsel, Counselor Wolf.
And one thing you could do, um, is call for cobblestones or, or, or the, the stamped concrete. And then you get, when the bids come in, or if you just get the prices and then you'll have to look at the available funding. It's probably the call on an alternate type of bid, so I don't think we'd have to decide right now necessarily, because we get prices for both.
We got prices.
But are, are they gonna bid this out?
They, they did, they did have prices.
Okay. I guess in that case, I would say cobbles and we wanna do it right, you know, um. Yeah, I, I would go with the coming.
Other, other counselors, like Counselor Shan.
Yeah, just one question. The reason they get cobbles for safety to school was for the very reason that they would make sure that people felt protected when they walk across. And then if the car did it, it would make a very obvious, they would obviously know that they're the wrong spot. That was the whole reason of the cobblestones. We actually wanted to have raised, um, I was, but the cobblestone, well, what DPS actually requested.
Other counselors. Okay, so there's a motion and a second and to finish topics. We'll do a voiceover and see. Uh, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed. Okay, we'll have to do a roll call.
Just on the amendment.
Yes, just on the amendment.
This is on the proposed cobblestone amendment.
Only two votes. Only two? Yeah. Okay, sorry, I was so, so, sorry, I'm erratic, but I. So nine and two. All right, any other amendments? Uh, maybe we have to make, uh, it's specified epoxy versus thermoplastic, is that what I heard? Or no?
You can do that. Uh, I, we all think that epoxy is a little better.
What's this, what's this saying on the plant's now?
Says thermoplastic.
Okay, well, there are amendments.
Motion to amend to epoxy.
Any discussion? Roll call, I mean, all those in favor, say aye. All right, well, we all know epoxy, that's like. Any, any else? Okay, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm the under, the underlying motion, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I can do a voiceover on that. All those in favor, as amendments of this plan, say aye. Awesome, any else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chair, what's our, other citizens?
Nothing to the.
Uh, Chair, vote.
Nothing tonight.
Okay, I'm good with the order. I will, I get together, uh, because if we have this, uh, Sasaki presentation at the same time as other clients. And I'm sensitive that we're gonna try and, you know, to vote, but we, we need data involved. That we, it's pretty clear, Counselor, it's one of there, so if I cancel it tonight, I'll have to confer, I'll confer with the chair tomorrow. Once we're done with this, all, first thing on the, uh, we have time posted tomorrow. Any else?
Yeah, the counselor. Just a single point, uh, you know, uh, I didn't wanna be a jerk earlier, but it did come out that I was. Uh, but you, you know, we do have a hundred and twelve days left for this administration, right? Uh, you know, it's gonna come to an end and we're gonna close the book and we need to begin to process, uh, moving forward. Many of us have been part of, uh, transfer, uh, because of the success of the term administration. But in fifty days, we'll be the mayor, uh, elect, and I think that we should be sensitive to that. In our appointments and, uh, the commitments we made and planned, all of those types of things.
Uh, your points will take, Counselor, as I said, I just, I just blew it, I intended it in general. You're right, this is, uh, Memphis, we're going for twelve years to a new administration. Our motion to adjourn.
So.
All those in favor, say aye. Any votes? Okay, thanks, everybody.